Can you turn your mics on?
It's off. More yell tonight, anyway.
Well, good.
No, we haven't yet.
It's 5:30. Sir.
Here we go. Everybody, meeting the orders. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this night, or this day of blessings. We ask that you be with us and guide us as we meet together as a community and leaders, and as we make decisions for our future and for the betterment of our community. We ask this in Jesus' glorious name. Amen. All right. Before we get started, welcome to the July 28 Bourbon County Commission Meeting. If you have phones, I'd ask that you silence them. If you're gonna have a conversation, private conversation, take it to the lobby. We ask that, for safety reasons, you remain seated and not block the aisles or the doorways. We will be having public comments. If you have signed up on a card, we ask that you completed the card completely so that we know the orders that have come in and we know your information. So, anyway, welcome again to the meeting, and we'll get started with the first order of business. Approval of the agenda. Is there any corrections?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I would like to add an executive session on top of the two that we have pursuant to 7543-19B1.
Okay. So, right there with that, underneath that other...
Yes, sir.
So, we have one already, right?
Yes, sir.
And then we have one for security measures.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like to remove commission and liaison. Unfortunately, I thought I had sent the proper document and I failed to do that, so it's my bad. I'd like to pick it up next week. I also noticed that, and please let me know if this is not the right... So, we have guests here, and I think it behoove us if we just moved them to the beginning rather than have them towards the end of the agenda. I mean, somewhere up above before...
Who's that?
We have K Works.
Yeah, they're at the top.
Okay. And I think public comment should be at the top also. That way, the public can say what they need to say and then...
Yeah, okay. I think for that, we will need to do an agenda item to review the three, or two of the three...
Yes, sir.
...resolutions that we passed in January for decorum.
I would agree with that. I was just thought that maybe...
You can go ahead and move it today and then we can pass a new resolution or bring one next week or something if you want.
So, you want to add that to new business?
I think what you were saying is you want to move public comments on the agenda and off the agenda to the very beginning. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Just for this, just for this one meeting?
Okay, let's go ahead and do it then.
And then the next meeting, we can go take a look at that resolution.
Okay.
You want to do it after the executive sessions or before?
Um, after.
After, so right after, okay.
So, public comments, there. All right.
And is that both on the agenda and off? Do you still want people to speak during the subject matter? Or do you want them to speak before?
Only for things that are not on the agenda.
According to the resolution, we do, and it's never been noted in here when we do, because it always says "not on the agenda."
Right.
It's for both. That public comments period is for, because they fill out a card, either for an agenda item or for not an agenda item.
Correct.
And then we do one and then the other.
Let's do for both. Let's keep it consistent there.
Okay. And then we can move that up there before old business.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll address it next week with a, on a change in the resolution. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
This person out here thought that he was on the agenda. Is he on the agenda?
Hang on.
No.
Now, okay, go ahead.
But I don't see him on the agenda.
Did you have changes? Yeah. Are you talking about who?
You're talking about the gentleman in the green shirt?
Yes.
Yes, he's part of the executive.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, so we don't need it. Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Okay. All right, so now I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Oh.
Did you need some?
I just read a note here. Down here under the 8-4...
Okay.
Things that are gonna, we're gonna talk about on 8-4 courthouse repairs and handbook review. We're probably not gonna take any action on those right then, so I didn't know if those could be a work session.
Courthouse repairs and handbook review?
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna, when do you want to do a work session? That night?
It's up to you guys.
It's the next meeting.
Maybe do one before and one after or something, so we can get started earlier.
8-4. Did you want me to give the report? Because I'm on the agenda to give you my report.
Okay.
Do you want to, or do you want to wait for the work session?
I think, you're on there tonight. I think we could strike that off, 8-4.
Okay, then, all right.
And then we could do a work session on handbook review if you want.
Yeah, you want to start it before the meeting?
Yeah.
You guys both available?
Wait, wait, you're confusing me. Are you striking the courthouse repair for tonight?
Down here below.
Oh, down below, okay, all right.
Not tonight.
Since you have one tonight. And so, the handbook review, would you guys be okay with starting that at 4:30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good.
A work session at 4:30, yeah.
4:30, all right. Now, I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Yes.
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 All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I move for approval, now, I don't have the corrected one. Did you add the minutes to the second revision?
I did.
No, okay. All right.
I sent them to you, but I didn't get them done.
Okay. We'll bring them up on the next. So, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Approval of 725 accounts payable totaling $222,836.95. Approval of 725-25 payroll totaling $300,076.35.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
So, I have a question about a payroll that I believe was overpaid.
Are we going to executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we want to do that on...
So, let's set payroll aside and approve of accounts payable.
Okay, yeah, we'll set that aside on payroll, right? Not on the...
Yes, sir.
The accounts payable, so we're good. All right, so I move that we approve the accounts payable for 725-25 totaling $222,836.95 and that we table payroll totaling $300,076.35 pending executive session to be...
I second you.
Okay.
Yes.
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 And now we're, for the next item, K Works Safety Audit. Mr. Mann and Mr. Parrish. Come on to the table.
Evening, everybody.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they were in there too, was that fine? If they, we'll see what happens.
I'll just, I've got one for myself here. I'll just pass these around. Got some handouts for you.
Not being able to get them.
Two handouts.
There you go. I think several.
Well, as you said, my name's Brandon Mann. I'm the Vice President of Loss Prevention for K Works, and with me is Monty Parrish. And Monty is the, what's our new title now?
Safety consultant.
We've switched to environmental health and safety and safety consultants for the loss prevention. Rebranding for us, if you will. But Monty has assigned a territory that includes Bourbon County, so he is your loss prevention safety consultant. So, here today, talk to you about, really about whatever you would like. Were any of you at the new Kansas County Commissioner orientation put on by KAC in January? So, you have set through the workers' comp section that we did?
Yeah.
Okay, so you are somewhat familiar with it?
Yeah.
Okay. My understanding, what I'm coming into this with is we have a problem with staffing at Road and Bridge and some safety issues potentially. Please just elaborate what you hope to accomplish and what we can do for you, you think, and then I'll kind of take it from there.
You want to?
Sure. So, I'm the Public Works Liaison, so I've been pretty much embedded with those guys out there. The issue we're having here, it seems like we need to make sure that there's a culture of safety and there's a culture of accountability. There seems to be too many accidents that are happening out there. There's a lot of, a lot of equipment's getting damaged. Somebody got hurt. So, as a new commissioner and as a liaison, what I would like to see is for us to go out there and really build a safety program. And that, we can build a program, but if we can't get the buy-in of the employees, that program's not worth the paper that's printed on it. Does that make sense? So, I would like to have an audit of the processes that's going on out there, highlighting safe practices, unsafe practices, best practices moving forward, how we can, how we can get our employees to buy into the safety program and ultimately be accountable for the work that they're doing. I mean, a good example was a piece of equipment was damaged last week. Nobody made mention of it. Nobody said anything about it. I don't know who did it. I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna go down there and do an investigation on it. I think that's, that's something that should happen with you guys or whoever else. The director's engaged in it, but I don't know if you're aware, the director is, he's moving on, okay?
Okay.
So, we need to get in there and make sure that the people at Public Works have the best that we can offer them in terms of safety and equipment and a good environment to work in. That's my expectation.
Okay, and how familiar are you all with K Works and what we have to offer and how we operate?
I am not. This is my first time hearing from you guys.
Okay.
We're actually kind of just learning a little bit about what K Works.
Okay. Well, how much time do I have? Let me, let me just start there.
About 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay.
The short, short version.
Yeah.
Well, there's homework for you.
Okay. Well, we expected that.
County governments can insure themselves in one of three ways. Number one, you have lots of money, like Johnson County, you can self-insure yourself. So, Johnson, Wyandotte, Wyatt, Sedgwick, Shawnee, Douglas, Riley, they all have enough money, they can self-insure themselves. Second option is you can go down to the local insurance agent, you can buy workers' compensation insurance from the county, okay? Third option, and what is most prevalent in the United States for county governments, city governments, and school districts, is that they pool, they create an insurance pool, and that's what K Works is. We're a non, basically a nonprofit insurance company that all that we do is we insure county risks and specifically workers' compensation. That's all that we do, okay? So, that's a little bit about us, and K Works has been around since 1992. And I've been around since 2001, so I've been with the, working with the counties for 24 years now. We have currently 87 counties in the state of Kansas, so almost all the counties that belong to the K Works pool. We have a staff of four loss prevention specialists, like Monty, plus three others, to cover the entire state. We do, what makes us different than a traditional insurance company is that you actually see us. We are, we are on-site, okay? We don't sit in our offices. My, one of my favorite sayings is, "We don't do safety from behind a desk." You can't do safety from behind a desk. You have to be on-site, watching what people are doing, and that's what we do. Now, with a staff of four and 87 counties, we can't be everywhere all the time, obviously. From what you've described to me, there's some things that we can do, okay? We have free in-person training that we do. We have defensive driving class. Anybody that's driving a county vehicle should go through that class every couple of years. It's a two-hour class. It's free of charge. It's through the National Safety Council, so participants get a certificate from the National Safety Council to turn into their own auto insurance carrier for a discount on their personal auto insurance. So, that should be everybody in the county that drives a vehicle or potentially could drive a county vehicle. Bonus to that, it's summertime. If you want to do the class now, and we've got county employees with teenage drivers at home, bring them to the class. We'll teach them too, and they can get a certificate too. Second class that we can do for you is we do forklift class. We do forklift certification. So, any piece of equipment that puts forks on it is now a forklift as far as OSHA and the Kansas Department of Labor is concerned. So, that includes a front-end loader with a bucket on it. It includes my John Deere tractor at home with a bucket on it that I put forks on. It includes a Bobcat that you put forks on. That is now a forklift, so don't say, "I don't have a forklift," because I know you got forks, you put on something out there. So, you need to have the forklift training. Third thing that you need to have, and that's every three years, forklift class, and it is about an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes roughly, and it's a certification class as well. It's also free. Third class that we do is flagging and work zone safety. We teach you how to flag properly, and we teach you how to set up a work zone properly according to the manual on uniform traffic control devices. We don't want people being cowboys and setting up traffic zones that are illegal. You know, you set it up according to the MUTCD. So, those are three certification classes right at the top that we can do for you in-person, free of charge. One of the other things that we do is three times per year, Monty is gonna be in your county doing inspections on your county facilities. So, he's already been here one time this year.
He's actually been here twice.
Been here twice this year, and so he'll be here...
I've been in his room.
A third time between now and the end of the year, doing a safety inspection on your buildings. And when he does that, he generates a report. It's based on OSHA regulations. It's basically a mock OSHA inspection. We have no enforcement authority. It's just our suggestions of what we've seen. Here you go, take it or leave it.
We were recently told we don't follow OSHA.
Correct.
Yes, and no. The OSHA charter does not include cities, counties, and school districts, so they have no authority to come here and cite you for anything and give you big citations.
So, who does?
The Kansas Department of Labor does have authority, and they follow the OSHA regulations.
So, we do follow OSHA.
So, you follow OSHA. It's enforced by KDOL instead of...
So, who, who in KDOL will come out and make sure that the safety program's up to snuff and that we're doing everything we can to protect our employees?
People like us, except they work for the state.
And they're not gonna come out in a, in a capacity to help and aid. They're gonna come out and they're gonna hit you.
Well, what we want is preventative. We want somebody to come out, tell us where we can improve. Let's make the improvements, then come back out. You know, that's what we're trying to do here.
So, has Monty's inspection twice now this year gone to anybody that's received? And nobody has received?
I've never seen Mr. Parrish's...
So, they've both gone to the county clerk's email? Yeah. I've had call and answer on...
So, you inspected the courthouse?
I have inspected the courthouse, and I've inspected the Road and Bridge building.
No, not building practices, best practices, not just buildings. We're not just talking about buildings.
Correct. He was just asking about when we inspected and what we'd inspected.
So, yeah, you just inspected the building itself.
Yeah, so what we do when we come out for those is we're looking for things that would cause work people to miss time based on having a workers' comp issue. So, that's what I come out and I look for in the building. So, the inspections are separate from the teaching the classes.
So, do you guys come out and do a task breakdown? For instance, have, have a heavy equipment operator get into his 13K articulating bucket truck, forklift, and manipulate it? Move a pile of dirt from one area to another? And then during that process, you know, not talking to him, but just critique his, what he's doing, whether he's following safety standards, whether he's following proper protocol for operating said equipment. Do you guys do anything like that?
Usually, no. We, that's not in our day-to-day what we do because of the work, quantity of work that we have. However, I am trained in doing that. So, I have a master's degree, and I've gone through all the training to do what, exactly what you're talking about. A job, job hazard analysis, or after, after a loss, do a root cause analysis to find out what actually caused that.
I would love to have some, that type of service at this level because I, I have faith in the people working at the barn, at Public Works Barn, okay? I think they mean well. I think, I think the first thing in my world, when you find a deficiency within your workforce, you don't automatically chastise them or give them paperwork. The first thing you do is you go back to standards. You make sure that they adhere to standards. First of all, they have to understand the standards. These are the standards of how I operate the equipment. These are the parameters of the equipment, and these are what we expect out of you as far as integrity, your workmanship, your professionalism, stuff like that. And then, we train them. We always go back to standards. I need somebody to start with the standards.
And that's, that's where we, where we lack is...
Yes.
Is we have no set standards. I mean, we've had, I'm not even gonna try to venture on the total number of accidents we've had since the first of the year, but we had one person that was severely injured in one of the accidents. And protocol, there was nothing. I mean, it was just kind of at the, at the director's discretion and whether or not there was drug testing or whether or not there wasn't drug testing.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, we need to develop a standard. And I know that K Works has come in and helped build the, probably the first safety committee that we've had with this Public Works. But now with some turnover and stuff, I think we really need to work some more on rebuilding that and moving, was what we're gonna be moving forward.
I hear from what you're saying that you lack policies and procedures. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yes, we had some policies that were vague at best. We are in the process of redoing those policies. I think that's part of the problem. I think, you know, alluding to the director, I think the director did what he could do at the moment, but absent of a hardcore policy, there's not much. And I think that's, that's not... Leaders, leaders don't go down to that level. Leaders take ownership of the problem. I'm taking ownership of the problem, okay? It's my problem. It's not the director's problem. It's not the people's problem. It's my problem. I need to fix this problem. So, I'm asking for your help. Can you help me fix this problem?
Absolutely.
Of course we can.
How many chiefs do we have that we're talking about in the Road and Bridge Department?
One.
Obviously, we have one leader, you know, department head.
Nine supervisors.
Nine supervisors, okay? And below them are all the line employees. So, one at top, nine, and then everybody else.
Well, the top has an assistant as well, so.
Okay. How, how many is the everybody else? Rough number?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay. One or two, nine and thirty-eight. That's the...
Thirty-eight's the total.
And that's, that's Road and Bridge.
Counting the nine and the one and the two.
Thirty, okay. And that, that's just Road and Bridge Department?
Yes, sir.
And your concern?
No, that's all in Public Works, not just Road and Bridge.
Oh, you call them two different things?
We have landfill.
And rock quarry.
Right.
And noxious weeds.
So, it all, all works as the...
They're all, they're all heavy equipment operators.
Every county's different. Every county's got a rock after, right?
When do we get the new person?
We don't know.
We're working on that.
Okay.
But because we're working on it, I'm not gonna sit back and wait for the new person. I need to make sure that things are in swing, you know, that we're moving this football forward so that when the new person come in, at least we have a program in place now. At that point, that individual can course correct and re-vecter when they want to.
There's nothing wrong with our current director. He's not defective. You can go in and help our current director set up a program for the new one.
Okay. And I will get, I will get no pushback?
No.
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 Okay. How about the, how about the nine supervisors? Am I gonna get pushed back there?
No.
You should, well, you should not. And if you do, it needs to come back to us.
Okay. So, that might need to be a conversation where the nine folks...
I can have that conversation.
Have a conversation in here where we have a resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners that they support the safety program that they're working for K Works with. And there's a sample, one of those in this handout here.
Okay.
If you want me to lead that charge, I'll do it. I'll set it up for the next person coming in. I would hope that one of the things that you're interviewing for is to make sure that they're a safety-minded person. They put safety first. I mean, the number-one goal everybody should have for their employees, the number-one goal when you wake up and go work in the morning is all of your employees go home safe at the end of the day.
I think that's everybody's goal, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, my understanding, it sounds like, just from what I've heard, it sounds like that's not everybody's goal. It's to get everything's done as fast as I can and, and despite safety.
I would, I would, I would venture to guess that you might be correct in that, in your assertion. Hence, I made the comment that we need to, we need to create and promote an environment of safety.
Culture.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Culture, thank you.
So, you want basically a safety committee that is just Road and Bridge Safety Committee? Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
They have one. I am told that they have one out there, but I'm gonna leave that up to you, gentlemen.
We're just gonna start from scratch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
If we had more time, I think generally we talk about safety committees. We really try to try to get the tie-in to all of the counties that are exposed.
We are more than happy to do a work session with you.
We would love to do that.
And you...
And in that way, we give you more time to...
Yeah, I think Monty and I need to do some strategizing and, Road and Bridge is closed by now. They're shutting down, so.
So, the time and Commissioner Tran, when he's the liaison, so.
Okay.
Anything you need out there, he's gonna be able to...
Do you want his contact? Same, Tran. Do you have it?
I do not have the Road and Bridge Director's contact, no.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do you need that resolution first?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Just, if you have any chance.
Commissioner Bearba, if I may. Last year, we presented all the documents that K Works recommends as policies, and they were just overlooked. So, that is something that has come before the commission. I know it wasn't...
Previous commission, yeah.
It has, it has come before the commission. It has come before the commission. So there are documents out there that we can pull off their side, but these are recommended policies to have in place. So it's, I mean, it's already done for you.
Boilerplate policies that you can change to, to tailor to your county as well.
And it also decreases your premiums.
It's always good.
Yeah.
There's, there's the main goal, other than safety. Keep those premiums down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're after. Is, you know, when we went in, uh, looking for auditor, that was to audit, tell us where we were at so we could make a plan moving forward. The clerk told us that she had another option through K Work and that is why you're here today.
Okay. All right, okay. Well, I, I'm imagining, uh, it's probably gonna be, uh, something I'll set up for next week or try to, i- if you're available. And, uh, see if Monty's available and I'm available. We'll come down here and just do at least a initial walkthrough, meet and greet, and get a lay of the land, uh, get a copy of the, uh, the, uh, manual for that department, all the policy and procedures they have in place and, and start to,
So we wanna look or maybe setting up a work session for August the eleventh, then?
Oh, that's really soon. Are, is that gonna be too soon for you guys? That's only two weeks away.
Meeting after next week, so.
And, and really,
Oh, two weeks.
A work session, we oughta, we oughta maybe put it on another day. Um, the, the budget committee's not utilizing the room here. Um, because if we put it on a meeting and we have a long meeting, well,
They need to go do, they need to go do their fact finding first, so.
Yeah.
We need to go out there and, um, next week after,
Okay, when I,
From the twelfth on, next week, I'm, just let me know. I, I'll meet you in the morning there or whatever you need.
Okay.
What date?
What date's good for you guys?
For a work session.
No, for, for their meeting.
For us?
Walk through. Uh, how, we just do the middle?
Well, we could do the middle. I've got, so just so, just to, my only conflict is, uh, I've got a, a safety presentation in Harper County, uh, the twelfth and thirteenth.
Okay.
I'm, I'm talking about next week, so like the four, three, eight.
Fifth, fifth or sixth, either one's fine.
How about, how about the sixth? Let's put it in the middle of the week, on Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday morning at the barn.
And this only involves them.
Uh, okay, well, can we make it, uh,
Nine o'clock?
Nine?
Nine o'clock?
Okay.
Takes us a couple hours to get down here.
From that, why don't we set the work session after you guys have done that? Instead of just trying to do a blanket, wait till after you guys get done, then you can recommend, you know, cause we're gonna, that way we look at whether it's gonna be a short work session or something that's gonna take us all day. So we'll table on that.
Uh, it really, I don't, as far as like our initial, when we do an actual presentation for you shouldn't take us long, but it just, it, we, we would really like to pull the, peel these open and talk to you about more of the things that we provide on a better detailed basis for you instead of a short amount of time. So it'd be nice to come back and do that.
Okay.
I think as we age, I'm too, you can handle that, I mean, really.
That's a very good idea, Katie.
Yeah, it works. It's even easier.
That's right. That way you don't have to actually call the board together.
Sure, sure.
And just work with Commissioner Tran.
That works for us.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
We can definitely get you headed in the right direction.
All right. Well, the, the safety committee's document has a lot of information on, on what I'm probably gonna be doing, uh, informing a safety committee at the Roden Bridge. So just to give you a heads up, uh, you know, um, where I'd go from here, so.
Okay. That's, you, you run into any issues, get hold of the train?
They have to want to be on the safety committee and have time, I imagine.
Uh-huh.
Buy-in's really, really key, really key. I mean, for the people who are gonna lead it, it's gotta see, it's gotta really be important to them. Cause that's who's gonna hold the people.
What is their commitment going to be? They're all watching this meeting, I can almost guarantee you. So what is their commitment gonna be? I don't wanna leave them feeling, wondering what is gonna go on out here, so.
Well, if we, if we're doing a safety, uh, committee, you know, uh, most of our, uh, county committees that are countywide will meet either, uh, monthly or quarterly,
Okay.
Uh, when we get, when we drill down to department level safety committee meetings, uh, they're usually doing those every week, uh, from what I've seen.
Just ten minutes before they shoot out?
Yeah, calling the tailgate meeting is really what we're talking about.
Tailgate, on, uh, pre-job briefings, that, you know.
I, I think, I think the training that you alluded to is valuable. I, I definitely would conclude that for sure.
I think that will give them a semblance that it's coming from you guys that you really want to get the rein, you know, get your hands around it.
Do you guys have a training, a trainer program whereby the training that you provide, we train somebody in-house, one or two people in-house? And those two, those two individuals become the trainer for the organization. That way,
We don't.
I don't know the answer.
We don't. No, yeah, short answer, no, we don't. I mean, I, I've trained him and the other three guys that, that do loss prevention for, for us, but, uh, yeah, that's, that, it's, uh, it's a little bit more involved than what you might think. It's very time consuming.
And this might be, you know, another conversation for another day, but we, we have had, uh, at least, at least one county at the time has, has put somebody in charge of safety. So they've really made a point person. Um, and she has done a really great job just diving into it, just, just really being completely open and, and open to learning new information. They're really on the right track in that county as well. And I think that could be something that, you might have to hire a new person, but if you can designate somebody out there that can, that you think is,
That is something that's in my radar.
I, I, what I'd really like to see is you guys eventually migrate to a whole county safety committee. You know, uh, that, that's really important. That, that would be the end goal, I think. And, and to actually hire somebody with a specific job of being the safety manager for the county. And it's probably gonna be somebody with the right attitude, but not the right background that you're gonna have to train them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
For that, I think us and all of the other elected officials would have to hire them because everybody needs to agree on that person. If, if it's gonna be the whole county.
You'd have to bring them in for sure.
Well, we can bring them in, but if we hire somebody and, and another elected official don't wanna work with them, you, you try to make them.
That's one, that's one of the things I cover in my, my safety committee's document is, that's one of the, the hardest parts of doing a countywide safety committee is, is elected official buy-in because you're, and you're basically doing a, a safety committee for a bunch of different businesses instead of individual, yeah, in, individual ones instead of one whole, right?
Right.
Cause of different personalities.
All right.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having us. I really appreciate it.
See you next Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now that you guys know my face and the purple shirt, I'll be easy to spot when I'm in town.
Just blending in with K State.
Trying to, well, trying to, maybe try not to if you guys aren't a fan.
Trying to steal their thunder.
Well, let me pull the room first before I tell you it's K State, Philip. Thank you very much.
You guys have a good night. Take care.
We'll see.
All right. All right, moving on to the next item will be executive session pursuant to K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B twelve to discuss matters relating to security measures. If the discussion of such matters at an opening would jeopardize such security measures. And I'm not, there's not a name assigned to it.
That's me.
That's you?
Yes, sir.
All right, how much time do you need?
Thirty minutes.
And who do you want there?
So it'll be thirty minutes to three commissioners, Justin Schaefer, Sheriff Martin.
Okay. So we will return at six thirty-six?
Second. Thank you, Katie.
Tran?
Yes.
Bearbauer?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Susan, did you get my emails concerning the core requests system that you wanted in a form?
What, um, email are you sending to?
Well, I only have a dozen for you, so I picked Susan W.
I'm, I'm a county clerk at Burbank County, so resend it to me, cause I'm not getting it.
Well, do you want me to put it on a form or do you want me to?
Oh, email.
Okay, and then, and then we talked, and then Everett puts this in writing to you about getting a red line of, hold on, for a document. Did you take, doesn't seem to get a red line?
Put that as a to-do.
Okay, thank you. I came by to see you today.
Yeah, my daughter had a doctor's appointment.
I think if Metro, uh, Mercury going retrograde involves daughters, because we're all having daughter problems. How about you, Jennifer?
Mine just turned eighteen.
Well, mine's thirty-seven and it's still a problem.
Some of them are getting more daughters.
Well, if we didn't do theirs.
All we, all we need is the, is the page with the expenses. There's a monthly and it's also a year-to-date.
All their stuff on it after.
Not that one page. It doesn't have any gurts. Of course, they haven't had any, any income, so there's none of that. Well, what are they going to be providing? They're gonna do, they're gonna provide, that's fine. Whatever it is they provide, that's what we're gonna see, so. And I, and I think, I think they're figuring that next report will be a adopted. Well, I can explain why I think there's a certain fusion out there. The contract seems to go to the permissioner who is the liaison person. Probably, it probably needs to be lifted back. Okay, Jim Harris. Then, then you have Leroy, and then you have, now you have. Well, whoever gets it, we just wanna be sure that we all, so, that's. Well, it's discoverable if you have it too. Correct. That's the only part I ever saw. Did she, did she share the form that I prepared?
I mean, I see it on Facebook, that's why I'm seeing it.
I had a form that I prepared and it only involved the sales tax. Well, she hasn't. I don't care about the form, as long as whatever, whatever they're providing, we get a chance to look at it, that's all it's. But I think what happens, I think that's the reason just may have sent to Freeman. And it may, it may not have been needed. That the report should be sent to the clerk.
It is in the, it's in the agreement that it's sent to the, no, person in, that's put up. Oh, yes, 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 yes. I had she said in the first three minutes, I said, to give it off because it's,
When did she tell you that?
Yesterday.
Well, that's, that's not, that's not true.
Well, my card is, I never heard that. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Senior person, I think, is on Thursday. They have gone the murals. There's a vineyard nearby. They're gonna take, to a little vineyard.
I talked to her a week ago.
They're gonna do the,
We, we know this, we know this very soon. Who gets court work?
And that's the same time as that afternoon.
And she said, that's the one that she go to.
Card tournament.
And, and, and I was, and I said,
What they say almost is,
That's what the agreement. And it says that the, the,
I don't think I will, though.
As appropriate. That is the due of the one point one. And there is a blank space that has an email address for the commission. Then you drop down to the next section and it says all other, other reports, other reports, what matters affecting this, would go to the county clerk and, I think a city clerk is in there, and then Freeman, and Freeman's attorney. It does not. But, but the agreement, the agreement covers the implementation money, the one twenty-one million, and it covers the sales tax. So the sales tax stuff, they don't have to send. Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. I'm just concerned that, that, that we are, it's clear that we will be able to get a report that they sent. They may redacted, they may, they may limit it. That's fine. Shit, it's the sales tax. That's all.
Like December? No, why? Have more information itself.
Next year. That's why I had a conversation with her, how much of this,
Yeah, yeah.
She, that's what needs to be discussed.
Okay, okay. Well, as long as you're looking at, is there any chance that you could add the one hundred and fifty, or persons to get? Okay, okay.
With county, municipal, city, county.
Yeah.
Manager and college, high school, and, okay, and that's weird.
I think it's the fifth. It's new, or eleven forty-five, something like that. I think the fifth.
The same day as what?
Same day.
Same time.
It's all the same, all the same.
It's the fifth with the six. Let me check to see if I have it.
Yeah, that's what I like about those.
And you take your own meal?
Or you can, or you can order a ten dollars sandwich.
I'd prefer it even before or after.
Too much fun for me. It's on there somewhere around there somewhere.
See, school starts the sixteenth.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of those kids. It's a close. I'm not gonna sit in the football. But I've also said I wasn't gonna sit in the song, okay? Oh, did I ever? I had earmuffs, clothes, stuff, whole sheet. That was just.
This year?
No, it was. Childhood dreams that never came to fruition.
Does it, did you see where the, they put out chlorine burnout? Should save some water for, for formula.
Yeah, that's the, I, I, yeah, I did that.
But do you also know that if you're on a blood thinner, you should not drink high, highly chlorinated water? Now, how many people in this town do you think are on a blood thinner? A lot.
Yeah, there should be, in, in their, in their responsibility to announce that they're having chlorine bl- uh, burnout. They should also have a list of cautionary things.
Cautionary things.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, I got into that when Pete, this was before Pete's heart surgery. He was doing, he was taking warfarin in. And all of a sudden, his eye and arm went out of sight. Like his blood was not thinning at all. And I said, are you drinking horse gut water like I told you not to? Yep, put him on bottle of water straight right off.
Wow. And you wonder how, how many other people that messes up? And they spend all their time trying to figure out the dosage rather than.
I know. Or push it, push it up and down situation. Yeah. Had to take Janice to the hospital.
Again?
Well, Pierce, Pierce the interesting guy. Now I've experienced it firsthand and this is not fun. Pete calls me at like eight o'clock and says, come help me take Janice to urgent care. Eight o'clock, there's no urgent care. It's dark.
No, no, there's not.
And so they took her to.
Six more weeks.
Hmm?
Six more weeks. No, no.
And.
All right.
They ended up having to take her to Pittsburgh. And she was there for two days. She had an impaction. You know, just from this black, you know, Janice is always very active and no water. Yeah, she can't do it now. They get, they took her upstairs and then brought her back down anyway, serum, and then did whatever they had to do.
Yeah.
Living in the desert is not common. It's the closest thing that I know to have, having a baby.
Did he have his reunion? Party?
Yeah, he had that.
At his house?
At his house on the patio.
I knew he wanted to, but I didn't. Don and I want to see our graduates here, so we're not a part of it. All of that stuff could be pretty, really, really tough.
Yeah, people have been coming over. I said, I'm not that old. I think that was the year I was born.
That is a big deal.
Yeah. Next year is live fifty, so. I graduated from Liberty High School, saw a bit of that one. See who's dead.
Ours is R M Stafford County. Oktoberfest.
We were just a class of four hundred people. Twenty year reunion. We had the August, we had over forty deaths. Ready? Most of them women.
Whoa.
And most of them.
That's unusual.
And most of them were drugs.
Most of them were what?
Drugs. Drug related. And we were, you know, when we were in high school in the seventies, you know? And that was really not the drug era. I guess it must have come up after, within the twenty years after. I mean, it, it was marijuana, but that's not it.
She, the worst thing we ever did was smoke a cigarette.
Oh, I know. I can honestly say I've never smoked a whole cigarette. Made a lot of cigarette filters.
You said that the, there were four hundred, you call it?
Four hundred.
I think it was sixty.
Well, I went to the last one room schoolhouse in the state of Missouri. And we had, in our eighth grade class, we had eight.
Don went to the one room schoolhouse, but I went to three rooms with three teachers. Three grades.
Yeah. They had, well, we actually had eight through five. Five through eight is one building, and then they built another building next door for. They didn't have kindergarten, it was just first grade.
They didn't have kindergarten?
So.
And you talk about community pride.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we got absorbed by Liberty, so. I imagine it was costly for the state of Missouri, so they decided they weren't gonna do it anymore.
Well, the school that I graduated from is still there, but they have in the whole school about as many as they had in my class.
My stepbrother, who's now deceased, went to the same school. One day we're back in the jungle gym area, playground area. And I found in the dirt a silver dollar. And my stepfather gave all the people who graduated from his class a silver dollar. He figures it was like a silver dollar, so he gave a lot of them.
No, I don't know. I didn't go here, didn't go at all. Didn't go there at all. So, we just moved to, we're really outside. We did not come here till oh seven. We're gonna trip, that's what we expected. And then, we were to September. I think it was September the fifth of oh seven, we declared our presidency. See, Don graduated in fifty-seven and I graduated in fifty-nine. So that we're gonna have about our entry. For them to still be here and still be around and make it their value is something else. Yes, 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 that is. Unbelievable, yes. You know, too, and then we always, always, we, we always graduate. And we still.
Why you guys think we're here? We've got a long time. It makes sense that we had a Barnum as a kind of mission. Everybody see that? His last name is Barnum.
Right?
I think so.
There used to be a postural wall out there that was of the circus.
See? Oh, no.
I was gonna say, yeah, but last.
So, Wisconsin River County.
When I was walking outside, um, when we took a, we took a, we took a decision. I was gonna see the cornerstone of our, uh, southern, south and eastern block. It had, I suppose, it was kind of finished, so the building was built. May I, they have started with five at one time? I'm gonna say no, because. And it's a pretty thing. I, I'd love that to be known. Just probably three names.
Is it Alan Zon? Is it Alan Zon?
No. In real, so.
Coffee.
Mm, I guess. They're telling up, they're telling up, not, is it the, the, it's a kind of commercial. Points in a line. It's all, but they don't do the, like, I can, I give them, is it? But, she passed on all the points except the one, so we redid it and leave a mark on Thursday. They have to corner.
They went backwards.
Can't be around, can't be around anything. Be nothing. But you can't have no, you can't have nothing. So you just continue yourself, you know, for a first year, or not for a year, anywhere within six being. So, um, also just. I mean, the day that we did it, the day we made it today, under twenty-five hour shape, she's gonna die or what? I was scared that she was gonna die. She'll die. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, she's. It's crazy, but it worked. Well, like he told her, I even make everything. I can't go through here. I'm out, I'm out, she can't tell me. Can't be around, like, Jake works cattle, so we have to be completely showered before we go to her. That is a big one. Have a, have a. It like takes like five minutes to do the process and twenty minutes to pull the wire off it.
I don't even care. I like this room.
I know you'll do anything.
Yeah.
Well, I don't really miss.
No, I miss it. Cause they do it just to keep it a little bit green.
Yeah.
Cause mine is not.
So, I was talking to Brian about that. And I told him I thought you had printed Merle's picture. Yeah. But I found it in my email, or world, and emailed it to him.
Okay, I see, Brian. Yeah, he asked me about that. I was like, cause I took pictures too.
Did you take?
So I thought he was asking me for. What I took.
I thought you were printing. I thought you had printed your picture.
No, I think we printed one that I took.
Was thirteen megabytes, so. Okay. Well, I got it. Emailed. We just promised to hang out. And I don't even know what he was thinking of doing.
All right, back in session. No action. I move that we return back to session, no action.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Number.
Yes.
And I move that we go into executive session, pursuit of KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. This was, who requested?
I did.
Okay. Commissioner Milver.
Uh, the three commissioners.
Three commissioners? And is it job performance?
Yes.
Yes. And how long?
I'll just say fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Second.
So we're returning at six fifty-five. Yes.
Number.
Yes.
Yes.
Probably, you seem to be picking on the technical, technicality violations. And that's considered a technical violation.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll hear more about that.
I don't need your line.
No, I prefer not to do that.
Apparently you have a piercing right there.
Cause they said that made it worse. I've heard, I mean. There was a girl there today that was getting treated, she's allergic to sugar. And something else. And then her sister, this one, allergic to heat, every time she bought a heat, she'd get ulcers. And this guy has done wonders for the thing.
I mean, his office is straight from the seventies, fucking paneling everywhere. Those are the best doctors though.
Susan, what K-Works handed out, was that basically what they gave you last year?
Did they hand out something to him?
Yeah.
I didn't get a copy.
Yeah, they handed out, two handouts.
No, um, so there are, there are policies and procedures that you can print off their website.
I'll expand my dates. But I don't need to print or PDF.
You want it in PDF?
Yeah.
I do too.
I have a much better filing system than PDF, cause I can put all the description and dates I want.
I wish we had time to document all that, all of our stuff in our office, that way.
You'd need a full-time archivalist.
I do.
And you'd probably have to go back to what, eighteen eighty-eight to start?
If we even, no. Yeah, we've got four filing cabinets completely full, I don't, I'm out of space, not having anything else to put stuff.
Yeah, when you find that nineteen eighty-three election, I'm still looking for that.
Nineteen eighty-three election? That would be in a different area.
Yeah.
But, like, you literally can't walk in the room.
Today move everything out of Memorial Hall, like, just here, that belongs here, and or there.
I don't think we had anything over there.
No. I think we just pulled up stuffs for not at all.
That was the genealogy. Now, we recovered some of the stuff that was supposed to be lost here that we were housing over there. So that is being dried out. Cause it rained.
Years of water bills and all sorts of stuff down there. Not if I care about it.
Yeah.
Does whatever you want.
It's sort of a, follows the record retention laws.
Three commissioners, three? Harrow, Welch, and Bacon.
From what yours is?
There's no year. Well, there was, I didn't. So I was concentrating on the names. Date and names, maybe.
I missed you. Wonder where you were at?
It's back here, my mind is.
Acting very quiet.
Very quiet, I was reading earlier.
Oh, okay. And since you needed food, I told her that you, uh.
I guess tomatoes and cucumbers.
Ooh, yes. I think I have some of those.
That work?
That'll work, it's a food, you're full, what about you?
We did not manage to grow any sort of market.
And they're.
And I don't know their will yet.
Did you farm them out to the apple?
They didn't take the drive to Farmer's Market.
Well, Jen correct, the word for dirty lumps, she said she had flowers.
Those are good, those cherry tomatoes.
And it's killed all the flowers, killed special regarding water, acid, chlorine. But I would have to fill up the analysis, that all their tomatoes are all coming on the same tub, I brought up all the vegetable baskets.
It's a cucumber. I made one, and can't, water, farmer's mark of sound recording.
Really?
Yeah, that's too, too early for me. We should be able to get to the bowl at four o'clock.
Well, there's more tomorrow. Yes. But it's not as low.
I get a little comes, there's just not, maybe.
I know, I know.
There wasn't too bad.
They all got lots of tomatoes.
Olive oil.
Except that I have to read. I'd be turning tomatoes myself.
That was the. Oh, yes, no. It wasn't, it was still, it was real light. It was a lot of this.
I don't, she told me what street. Cherry tomato, and they were coming on like grapes. It was, it was excellent, you could just eat them right.
Down the monster cucumber hiding out.
About this time around, they start with every Saturday.
Cucumber.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And it was in, it was in my horse ranch plant.
They, they.
I got the fence around one, I don't have a wire. And I got her saying, should we have, several people out at the lake, or have they said the end chickens, are they over there? I said, and, oh, hey, everybody here.
Our cucumber, uh, this, and they come down.
Really, ravaging.
And if you have, it's easy to fix that way, they, and they still hide.
Have you ever, have you had one porch, you're halfway through the fence, and then it got nice and heavy? You had to break it half?
Yeah, and, yeah, and Phoenix a few weeks ago. We would always have a problem. I lived, I had a three-story locked house, and the pigeons would get on your rails and destroy your car.
Like this man, and then this man.
They've now, so, over these people that they'll hire, they strolled LED lights to keep others that are working on deers.
It's a filling, yeah.
Well, they say I bring, I bring spring soap.
Be ground where spring, where.
And there's a, a, it's a sound. And then calling them in, excuse, we don't invite somebody to eat, they'll get angry over it.
Or invite, well, I accuse my nephew, you feed them all summer, then you shoot them in the fall. That's, that's, and, and it takes, what is it, all camera, he picks out the one he wants.
Oh, yuck. We have a young buck that comes, he was, we think, was a little, he was one of twins that were born about. And he doesn't start, and then they go, now they're starting to divide, but he's down, but he will step back and let his hen eat, and his sister eat, and then it's out.
It is beautiful.
We call it grandpa.
I was gonna say, yeah, I had that, no way.
Yeah, that's really, you know.
He's also a taxidermist, he keeps, yeah, year-round.
I'm telling you, stay on this side.
But they have three, I think they have three deep.
They like cucumber. They, they, they don't eat really, they take, they do.
We've had turds.
You know, the rabbits.
Don't tell me my side.
I just feel like. It's a little just.
Yeah.
And then a whole bunch of.
I'm fair, to camera and then pick up and shoot.
I just said, I just sell tickets to a lot of them. He says, well, you hear it all the time, Eddie, just, oh, you just. Well, you can like, talk to Eric. You know, I didn't find it, but like. Like, I had no idea.
He has a daughter.
We have one.
Yeah.
That I've built some trellises.
She, she got close, and she didn't get it, but she did.
But we have grass. Yeah. My dad, they fried off their mouths.
And the dang bird. We had a nest, we had a nest, it's, it's a bluebird, the bluebirds do it.
Or a hedgeapple, I wonder?
Living in a hole.
No.
I think they tell, yeah, they tell you, throw those, they, no, nothing like that.
We've seen, I love my fresh fish.
It's all, it's all like a spine, so.
And, yeah.
Of course, I talked about it last year.
Guys, I'm not, yeah, like, I don't want, like, matter it with. It's like, well, things, I'm actually, so.
Oh, really works, I guess, like, well, there'd be more people.
Oh, do they?
I had trouble with the deer eating my pastas and my sweet potato vines this year. Horrible. I think it's their garden traits. I think.
Yes.
But I don't know, yes, the deer, I've seen deer, but I don't, we also have solar lights that blink through my eyes. And they just put them all up, it looks like there's predators. The squirrels will come and bite, it's one of them.
Well, they kind of have an exit that goes on the back side, but it's just a patch, it's not, it's not, it's not normal. It's more like a, in like, a, in a way, I don't know.
So is it, is it, does it go that way, goes to middle school?
Yeah, they're telling me, they're saying. No, they, oh, I, I thought, I thought there was a whole building.
Looks like it.
I mean, probably for classrooms, cause they have a. Yeah, yeah, and they're rented, they, they kind of, they're, maybe they're even lost.
We saw them bring the filling.
Yes, yeah.
They may have been in the dig, so now we know.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, there's a board there with a picture, on the board now, I don't know what all that board says.
The look, but I noticed the, on Marbury. Right off that line, it's, it's like.
Yeah, more plastic, yeah.
A city street.
I'm on, I know, I don't know.
I had that problem with my potatoes.
I wonder.
I couldn't figure out how to.
What I've come from.
You're in just one rock.
Oh, yeah.
Goes up to Ellis, and then goes up to the south side.
Called the experts.
Now, where the other street, like, a, a dirt road that goes out back.
University of Biden.
Those people that are just.
Called them. And they told me, no, I can keep, you know, you know, cause they know they're taking them there.
Well, you know, enough we had to sell them, that's what it meant.
But they made them build that road off of Marbury, cause they need that, Egress, and they built that school up there. It was meaningful.
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
It's got a name, it doesn't have a number, it has a name, about there.
Big mountain girl.
Really?
If you didn't have the roof out, that's, she's a.
That road, you know, made part of the regular.
And they was school.
For, I would guess, if you have to do the one that goes to Ellis, and they can't, there's no way you do that, there's not space. Well, they use, Mr. Peeny, you know, they use some of that more wrestling. They have, they have it for practice, and it's so hot, and it's so cold in there, that, yeah, it's not.
It's the soul.
Um, my girlfriend, if he lives there, what's his name, he, Paul Partley, owns a building, I don't know, but he lives here, he has his old cars in there. I can go in, they had to do a, they came out of the paintball, he said, they said, dad, to the old, the old, and I said, so. And then there is a party, that, that.
Rain on my head. My head, and he says, I come back, I come back, and they call, and it, in that car, he says, dad, come back, he says.
It does look nice.
The rest of the dirt, put around. I think the resident parents got up at the arms about the conditions.
He was so good. They need to.
Do your condition.
Yeah, they need to, no, no, it is.
It was not safe, and it wasn't.
Guy, somebody didn't care. Well, I found that, I just found that out.
He granddaughter's in there.
Well, you saw where the, Tarran Valley, Freeland Hospital, I guess, in Johnson. They had a twelve billion dollars.
At what?
Had a twelve billion dollar asbestos paper that had to be completed, uh, million, that had to be completed before they could tear the building down.
They knew exactly.
That's a lot of asbestos.
What we do.
All those steam pipes, everything that they had to do, those, they were all asbestos.
Returning deception, no action. I move that we return deception, no action.
Second.
Tran.
Yes.
Drew Bear.
Yes.
No Bear. Yes.
Okay, and then I, uh. We will enter into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. This will include the three commissioners, the clerk. And Dr. Cohen with HR on phone, and it will be for, um. Susan, how long do you believe that you need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Um, can I invite Jennifer in?
Yes. And the trade.
Do you want to come, Jennifer?
All right, and we'll do just the five minutes, we'll return at seven oh.
Second. Second, thank you, Katie.
Yes.
Tran.
Yes.
Drew Bear.
Yes.
Yes. Jason, were you trying to give away my plan to climb the school, uh, rocks and do mini golf?
What's that?
Were you giving away my plan to do the mini golf at the school with Hard Knocks?
Blue tree was dead.
Yeah. Okay, so this is.
We were just wondering what was in there.
This.
The only way to find out.
There we go.
Build a mini golf course in there.
See this little bit right here, ultimately there's a spot, and I wondered if. I would, too, as a road is plotted. I'm sure they.
I've been watching an HGTV program. How the program is.
But, so, but, oh, my gosh. That little dress, get ten, then ten goes on a. And then, whatever that, everyone has to go to the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, pretty.
It wasn't the, wasn't it part of the middle school?
Shepherd.
Shepherd, and that Shepherd gets. Right, as in, for the. Back to Charles. Or you could go in.
And that's, that's what I was, I think it, I think it skips, this one, it was Shepherd's here, and then it jumps, well, you see.
We got four.
Where is, uh, where is, where is Shepherd?
That's right.
Where's the middle school?
It takes eight hours in our school.
Yeah, this is Shepherd.
I think Shepherd kept one of them. Yeah, and, oh, but then it turns into Eighth Street, I assume, and beats.
Take your shoes off.
Charles Street.
I got that, I, Charles.
If you're upset, I'm hot.
The point is, that make is, it's a danger.
Next report expected. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Charles Gentry.
Hi.
Hi. Um, I am a member of the emergency room sales tax monitoring committee. I serve along with Dr. Randy Nichols and with retired pharmacist Craig Campbell. So the three of us constitute that monitoring committee. We were appointed by the previous commission at about the time that the county was taking up the sales tax, the special purpose sales tax for the establishment and operation of an emergency department here. What we have basically are two jobs. First, we have to make sure that the sales tax that is remitted to the county, which comes in monthly, should be coming in monthly, um, is in fact used to support our emergency department. And the second part of our responsibility, uh, which comes about as a result of the contract with Freeman Fort Scott Hospital, our second task is to make sure and be able to verify as best we can how Freeman has applied those sales tax funds to the actual establishment and operation of the emergency department here in Burtman County, in particular in Fort Scott. We know that's happened because we can see with our own eyes the work that's been done, uh, out at Mercy Hospital. Uh, we can see with our own eyes the fact that they have hired staff and are hiring more. Uh, we know that they are moving through the, uh, the process of getting KDHE, uh, approval. So we know that things are on track and we also have been able to verify that the expenditures in the establishment and I will call it pre-operational expenses, uh, do in fact exceed the amount of the sales tax monies that they have been paid. They received two payments, uh, of sales tax money. They received a payment, uh, April the eleventh and they received another payment. Oh, I'd have to look. It was June twenty-sixth, I believe, something like that. Um, the contract we have with them calls for the tax to actually be remitted within thirty days after we receive it on an ongoing basis. So if we received, uh, the payment from, it comes from the, the state treasurer, you know, it's collected, it all goes to Topeka. And there's a, a delay period while accounting's happened and they collect the money and so forth, and then they remit it to, to the county. Um, but normally those are, those are received towards the end of each month, I would say.
Twenty-fifth.
Right. Um, the March one was delayed. It didn't come in until early April. Don't know why, but, uh, I have, I have suspicion. There was some illness in the office up there. But, um, the contract we have with Freeman calls for that money to be paid over to them, released to them, um, within thirty days after we receive it. Um, so, right, well, then the contract as amended, the original contract called for Freeman to send a report of how they spent the money, showing that they spent at least that amount, perhaps more, but at least that amount in the emergency department here. That was to have come to us monthly. So it kind of coincided, right? We, we would deliver the money to them monthly and they would report back how it was spent monthly. That was changed in a memorandum, uh, of understanding so that the reporting that's coming back from Freeman is now done on a quarterly basis rather than on a monthly basis. And that was again agreed to by the previous commission and is reflected in the documents. So those, those are now the agreements that we're operating under. The next report that we will, when I say we, the county, would expect to receive from Freeman, uh, will be, what will be for the, the, the third quarter of the year, the months of July, August, September, and we would expect to receive that report from them sometime in the middle part of October, I would say. Um, I'm here to, to ask, um, some clarification, I guess, and some authorization so that when these reports are turned into the county and they're coming to the, to the county clerk, um, the contract calls for them to go to the liaison person. Uh, originally that was Jim Harris. Then it was Leroy Kruger.
Yeah, it's me.
And now it's you. Uh, I will point out, the contract says that notification of who that person is, because there's a right to update and change, the written notification, uh, needs to be sent to Freeman if it hasn't already been. And maybe it has.
It has.
Okay.
They know, they know.
They know you're the guy. Okay. All right.
And I, I did get the last, uh, last report. I'll have to admit that I have dropped the ball and knocked up with you guys to show you what, what, what we got from them.
Okay.
That's all me.
Well, it's not a problem because, because Freeman was, was gracious enough to, to share that information.
Right.
We didn't necessarily get everything. We, we, but we got enough that we could see that their expenditures, um, exceeded, their costs exceeded what they were receiving in sales tax money.
Right.
So that allowed us to give thumbs up, uh, for, for now, what will be the next, the third quarter.
So you're the oversight board and you're trying to make sure they're getting the money.
We get the report. When you get it.
And doing.
If you could, if you could, if it's okay that, that, and, and we, we, we understand, um, we understand professionally what confidentiality is. Um, a doctor, a lawyer, a pharmacist, yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty okay with, with confidentiality. So anything, in fact, we would treat it all as proprietary for, for that matter. Um, but we want to just, so we can do our jobs.
What is the problem? Are you not getting something from us?
We, we, we were able to, we were able to get, we were able to get the, the, the first report. But this, the next report, the one that will come out in October, um, we, we understand that we would need the commission to specifically authorize the release of that information so that we can see it under the conditions I've described.
And once we get it, I will, I will make sure that happens and then I'll.
Well, I think we want to be sure. Right. We, and I appreciate that. We want to be sure though that, that the commission has said it's okay for this committee to be able to, to carry out their function, right?
Are you a committee set up by the, the previous commission?
We absolutely are.
Okay. So you're our committee.
We're your committee. And we serve at your pleasure. I mean, you know. But, but we can't do our jobs unless, obviously, we can see, we can see the money that has been paid from the state. Uh, the, the, the clerk has been very good about providing me with, with the monthly reports showing the amounts that have been remitted from the state on our quarter cent sales tax and how those have been paid out. So we're, we're, you know, we're, we're clear on that part.
Okay.
Um, and we're, we're clear so far on how, how Freeman has spent the money, but there seems to be now an issue of the commission needing to, to, uh, by resolution authorize the release of these expenditure information to us.
We need to make a resolution to release that to you?
That's my understanding.
Under whom's request?
May I speak?
Yes.
Um, Anita and I have been in contact and the, the last report.
Who's Anita? Anita Walden. She's the administrator of the local hospital.
And, um, uh, when they, the last group agreed to do this, they just said, just send it to the clerk and then I'll get it disseminated to you all. And that's how you got it, David. Um, sorry, Commissioner Bearbar. The, um, the information that in this most recent document has way more than what we probably need. And so I was concerned with some of the information getting disclosed publicly because some of their information should be private. It's private company. Um, I told her, I said, really, all we need to know is how you're spending our sales tax dollars because it is core discoverable. So I want to make sure that we're getting a, a report that is able to be disseminated.
Right.
And so she's working on that with their legal team. And that's what I explained to, um, Charles about, um, how hopefully within the next week or so she'll have all that worked out. We'll have some memorandums to, to fix, but we, we can get that information. That's not a problem. I just want to make sure we're not disclosing things that they don't want disclosed.
So what is on?
Excuse me. Um, Mr. Gentry shared with me a form. Have you, you kind of copy of that?
I didn't bring in one with me tonight.
Okay, I'll, I'll send that form over to you because it's a really pretty.
Straightforward.
Yeah. Straightforward form that doesn't really violate any type of, of.
Yeah.
I, I did leave a copy with. I left a copy of that form with Anita.
Okay. And I got a copy. So I'll, I'll share it with the clerk. And in that way, I think we start, utilize this in that form, I think we'll be in good shape. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tran.
So just for my identification, that form does not contain any HIPAA, PII.
No.
Or proprietary information. Or the, the, the document she, you're getting contains, does it contain HIPAA?
No.
PII?
No, but it contains their financial, full financial.
Proprietary.
Yes. So I, I would caution on that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think if we could use, uh, Mr. Gentry's form, then it should, should solve all of our problems.
And I think that's what we'll make a resolution on is to adopt that form.
Well, there's nothing magic about it. If Freeman says we would prefer it look like this, you know, that, that's okay too. My guess is we were able, we as a committee were able to see the documents thus far because they don't have any other income right now. Okay? I think it's when they start deriving income from other sources, from private insurance, from Medicare, from Medicaid, that sort of thing, maybe grants even, I don't know. Um, we don't care about that. We care, we care specifically about how they spent our sales tax money.
Okay.
And so the, the reporting for.
Sounds like they need to do a specific report for us and send it to us to send to you.
Right. Well, I mean, and that's.
That's what that formula is on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Shouldn't be too time consuming for them.
Sure. You bet.
We will not pass that over to her.
Yep.
If we don't have it done by the middle of October, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm hoping to get and have a meeting with you guys before then.
When does your committee meet?
Uh, we meet as needed. We're not on a regular basis. So we, we did have to get together here recently, uh, because we wanted to be sure that we could report. And I did, I report through the chairman that it looked like everything passed muster.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. You bet. All right. Next is, we're going to go into old business, tax sale update. Mr. Hopkin.
Um, no. Didn't you want to, didn't you guys try to add public comment on and off the agenda? So does anybody have any public comment?
That was only one card we had.
Oh, okay.
We, we had went beyond.
Gotcha. Nobody wanted to talk about anything.
Yeah. That's a good thing. All right.
Okay. So I wanted to, um, touch on the tax sale. It's going to be different than what residents are used to in the past. Um, so the board has, um, agreed to go with Clinda Osterman and attorney group out of the Wichita area to, um, perform our tax sales. So once we receive, or once we provide the information to this attorney's group, they will continue with getting, um, service and doing all the steps that they need to file on the properties. Once we give the information to them and they file, there's no getting your name off of the list unless you pay. And you'll have to pay everything plus core costs. So I'm here to let people know if you have taxes from twenty twenty or before, you need to pay those immediately. And we're clear so far on how Freeman has spent the money. But there seems to be now an issue of the commission needing to, by resolution, authorize the release of these expenditure information to us.
We need to make a resolution to release that to you?
That's my understanding.
Under whom's request?
May I speak?
Yes.
Anita and I have been in contact and the last report...
Who's Anita?
Anita.
She's Anita Walden. She's the administrator of the local hospital.
And when they, the last group agreed to do this, they just said, "Just send it to the clerk and then I'll get it disseminated to you all." And that's how you got it, David. Sorry, Commissioner Bearbauer. The information that, in this most recent document, has way more than what we probably need. And so I was concerned with some of the information getting disclosed publicly because some of their information should be private. It's private company. I told her, I said, "Really, all we need to know is how you're spending our sales tax dollars because it is core discoverable." So I want to make sure that we're getting a report that is able to be disseminated. And so she's working on that with their legal team. And that's what I explained to Charles about how, hopefully, within the next week or so, she'll have all that worked out. We'll have some memorandums to fix. But we can get that information. That's not a problem. I just want to make sure we're not disclosing things that they don't want disclosed.
So what is on...
Mr. Gentry shared with me a form. Have you kind of copied that?
I didn't bring in one with me tonight.
I'll send that form over to you because it's a really pretty...
Straightforward.
Yeah, straightforward form that doesn't really violate any type of...
Yeah.
I did leave a copy with, I left a copy of that form with Anita.
Okay. And I got a copy, so I'll share it with the clerk. And in that way, I think we start, utilizing that form, I think we'll be in good shape. No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tran.
So, just for my identification, that form does not contain any HIPAA, PII, or proprietary information? Or the document she, you're getting contains, does it contain HIPAA?
No.
PII?
No, but it contains their financial, full financial, yes. So I would caution on that. But I think if we could use Mr. Gentry's form, then it should solve all of our problems.
And I think that's what we'll make a resolution on, is to adopt that form.
Well, there's nothing magic about it. If Freeman says we would prefer it look like this, you know, that's okay, too. My guess is we were able, we as a committee were able to see the documents thus far because they don't have any other income right now, okay? I think it's when they start deriving income from other sources, from private insurance, from Medicare, from Medicaid, that sort of thing. Maybe grants even, I don't know. We don't care about that. We care specifically about how they spent our sales tax money.
Okay.
And so the reporting form for that...
Sounds like they need to do a specific report for us and send it to us to send to you.
Yes.
Well, I mean, and that's...
That's what that form is on.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Shouldn't be too time consuming for them. They should just...
Sure, you bet.
We will not pass that over to her.
If we don't have it done by the middle of October, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping to get and have a meeting with you guys before then.
When does your committee meet?
We meet as needed. We're not on a regular basis. So we did have to get together here recently because we wanted to be sure that we could report. And I did, I report through the chairman that it looked like everything passed muster.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
All right. Next is, we're going to go into old business, tax sale update.
Um, no. Didn't you want to, didn't you guys try to add public comment on and off the agenda? So does anybody have any public comment?
That was only one card we had.
Oh, okay.
We had went beyond...
Gotcha. Nobody wanted to talk about anything.
Yeah. Actually, a good thing. All right.
Okay, so I wanted to touch on the tax sale. It's going to be different than what residents are used to in the past. So the board has agreed to go with Clenda Osterman and attorney group out of the Wichita area to perform our tax sales. So once we receive, or once we provide the information to this attorney's group, they will continue with getting service and doing all the steps that they need to file on the properties. Once we give the information to them and they file, there's no getting your name off of the list unless you pay. And you'll have to pay everything plus core costs. So I'm here to let people know, if you have taxes from 2020 or before, you need to pay those immediately. Otherwise, you're going to have to pay the total amount on your property plus core costs. I don't have any type of estimated timeline on when they will get everything taken care of once we get that information to them. We don't have a list of properties for the tax sale. Once we provide all the information to this company, they will provide their service and give us a list of tax sale eligible properties. So if you are concerned that you have back taxes, give us a call, 223-3800, extension 803. We can look that, look that information up for you and let you know how much you need to pay to get off this immediate tax sale. And then it is my intention, once I take treasure, to continue with the tax deals. Starting in January, we will have, begin the process of the 2021 taxes. So heads up.
We'll get this company to catch us up, is the way I understand it, right?
I don't know. I don't know if that's...
And moving forward because it, no cost to the county.
Right.
Right, so...
When's the deadline to pay your taxes? Before your name goes on the list?
When they announce the sale, it'll be in the paper.
Okay.
They can pay up until the sale, can't they, Jennifer? Even if it publishes in the paper?
You can redeem, yes, but you will have to pay everything.
Right.
That's...
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, and we don't have a, any type of set date of October 1st to pay the 2020 or before. That's why I'm here to say, please, please pay them immediately. We definitely don't want to see anybody lose their homes. But once, once they start their sale, the only way to get off of it is pay everything. And then another thing I'd like to touch on for 2024 taxes, if you do not pay by this Thursday, July 31st, that is the deadline per state statute that we have to publish your name in the newspaper. And you will also incur a publication cost on that as well.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
That was a courtesy update. So hopefully, people get in here and get that done so that they...
Yeah, and I've mentioned on the radio...
Nice, okay, thank you.
Hospital equipment. I have visited with GovDeals.com and we're going to be meeting on Wednesday to go through up there. And then he will show me the process, the next step that we do because we put the stuff on the side.
We do?
Yeah, we're the actual, well, there was a process that you go through once they get it on there because then you can start using that company even for future sales.
Well, what was the holdup? I mean, we hired him in March.
We went through, I'm thinking, I'm pretty sure that former Commissioner Wizenhut was the point of contact and then he resigned.
So we hired an auction company that don't come out, take pictures and do it themselves? We hired an auction company that self-service?
We took pictures and sent to them. And the pictures, they cannot open the file.
And we told them we refused to put it up, that that, we hired them to do that. So I would push back.
Yeah, why are we, why are we, other auction companies, they, I mean, they're getting, they get paid from a percentage of what they sell. So why are we doing their work for them and giving them a percentage? Just for their platform or what? I would push back.
Well, in conversation with the gentleman that is the point of contact, he said he got pictures that Jimmy took for them and they cannot open the pictures. So he's coming down Wednesday and I'm going to be with him and we're going to take care, we're going to get this thing moving forward.
Yeah.
Starting Wednesday, you know, because they...
But then they're going to list it on their site. They're not going to make us list them on their site.
No, it's their site.
And they're going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I did, once I got ahold of this contract, I went to looking at it. This looks like a contract that... Out of renewals as well. So did we contract them to do everything or just this hospital cell?
What's in there, just right now. My understanding is that we were going to have some maybe future options of county equipment material that we're going to probably use them as well. Because that's the way the contract reads.
Did...
And it was signed by Commissioner Wizenhut.
Did you all vote to sign for a year? Or did you all just vote to sign for just that one that you voted?
And double check the meeting, but I'm...
I believe, I watched that meeting and I didn't think, I heard you say that it was for anything besides the hospital agreement, the hospital equipment. So in that case... Yep. Did everybody get this contract, Susan?
Yeah, I got it.
So, may I?
Yes.
Originally, when they were setting it all up, they told us that we were going to have to go on site and we told them that we were going to have to put it on site. And we said, "No, not according to the contract that we were not doing that." So that's why I say push back because they, that is their responsibility.
And I read the contract the day, too. And it said that once they, they got it on their site and they made the sales, then the arrangements for pickup and stuff was going to come through, comes through the buyer.
Yes.
Yeah.
I do agree with that. But they wanted us to go in and input everything and...
No.
We told them, no.
They said, that's why Jimmy sent them pictures.
Yeah, right, yeah. With, I think with explanation of what they were.
But they can't open the file.
So this is what I have a problem with. Again, this 5.0 term of MOU. MOU shall commence on this date and is signed by the second party and will continue for a period of 12 months unless otherwise terminated upon 60 days written notice by either party. This MOU shall automatically extend for an additional one-year period.
Yeah, and my understanding is that as soon as the sale is over, we can submit that letter.
Gotcha.
And that will...
So are we going to ask Bob to go ahead and draft that so we can send it as soon as they're done? Okay.
Unless you want to use them again. Because it's kind of like eBay.
Is this, um...
Well, they took, they did this in March. And I don't really want to use them again if they take that long.
Does the Sheriff's Department know you use them on vehicles?
Yes, we do use them and it's kind of surprising that what you're discussing is what they actually are doing. Usually, they're the ones that come down, take the pictures. They're the ones that post everything, the feeds itself.
Yeah.
It goes towards the buyer.
And that's what they say.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, this is weird.
This is grand, this is, what a different language of what you're talking about.
Well, it's still in there. You guys want to see it.
The sale's completed because the buyer will buy the big one online and then we will...
I don't believe it's listed online.
Yeah, it is. GovDeals? No, not yet, no.
But that's what I'm saying, it's been, this has been going on for a very long time.
Well, again, I'll, you know, I'll explain that Brandon was overseeing it and he resigned and then it was forgotten. Nobody, nobody picked it up. Nobody remembered it until just like two weeks ago.
Alls I'm saying is the moment they were hired, they should have been on it. And we shouldn't have had to remind them. They were hired.
Well, I can't go back and beat him up because, because he didn't do it. And he probably kicked my butt, so... I'm just saying is that it all got dropped until, and I didn't even know about it until two weeks ago.
Yeah.
You know, I did not remember it until two weeks ago, so... Or whenever it was that you brought it up. So that's where we got to go.
Okay.
All right. But we will. I'm going to meet with the guy on Wednesday.
Okay.
Next thing up is hiring and terminating employment memo. Memorandum. Was there anything additional on that? On that memo? I know on the fence viewing, there were some changes that the attorney made.
I think we clarified. I think, are you sending a new one?
I saw it, I said, yeah.
You're sending a new one, so if you guys just want to sign it and we'll document it?
You guys can look at it. Yeah, it's the condensed down version of it.
Yeah.
What is it?
Because I really need to send it out to all the...
And it takes out us on the, on being part of the process.
Oh, I like that, yes, okay. I did read that. And so if it's the same one you sent out on the internet, then...
Yeah, yeah.
Then I, oh, we all sign it?
Right.
Somebody want a motion to sign? You want a motion to approve it? I'll go ahead and sign it.
Make the motion.
Okay. I move we approve the memorandum presented by David and worked on with Dr. Cohen for hiring and termination of employment to go on our handbook.
My second.
Tran?
Yes.
Bearbauer?
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
And that is you, Mrs. Walker.
I spoke with Kay Camp, who is our liability carrier. And the recommendation is to follow the law.
And I saw that, I saw that. And I believe that the county counselor reviewed, reviewed what I, what I had submitted or what I shared with you and everybody. And that there needs to be some wording changes, which I will...
The statute says the county commission shall be the fence viewer. Shall is the word.
We shall be fence viewers.
Well, I guess we don't get to decide.
You don't have a choice.
It says we shall.
Well, we can designate, designate.
You can designate.
Okay. We'll just do it. We'll just do it, David, and we'll just have to make flyers of that thing.
So I'll bring all the stuff that I, that I had and then change the wording and I'll bring it next meeting.
Tell us where we're going, I guess.
Yeah, tell us with you. And then we just have to wait. Because anybody that, that wondered it previously is going to have to come to the clerk's office.
Yeah, and I think that maybe...
And fill out the forms.
They'll do the form and then we can go and do it. And then we'll come back and present the, we can present it at the table and then we can vote. But we can just go information collecting and maybe give them some information, which is the information that Bob said you, you looked up and did a good job looking up.
True monkey.
Yeah.
Are we incurring any liability by not taking care of this? Because don't you have some existing applications?
The mic is off.
Is it?
Who did that?
I didn't.
We do have some applications. I'd have to go back and look at those. I don't, do you have those individuals that came forward before?
I have names I can reach back out to those individuals, yeah.
I only seen one that came to the table as far as I know.
But there was one that reached out to me.
Johnson, I believe.
Yeah.
They'll need to fill out an application.
Right. I'll reach back out to them, make sure that they, that they know that we're going to be doing this. Because at the time, we told them we weren't.
Or we told them we didn't know anything about fence viewing.
Which is a learning process.
Probably not a lie.
It's going to be a learning process. So, all right. Next up, five-year solid waste plan. Commissioner Tran, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. So the five new members are going to be the three commissioners. Mr. Joe Smith, environmental engineer, has volunteered to step up to be the fourth. And my recommendation is, because right now, the director of public works is the fifth person. So I recommend we table this until 45 days.
Okay.
So I...
And they're getting ready to send you a nasty letter.
Okay, so we pick somebody arbitrarily and then have to redo the whole process again?
I think you can go ahead and approve that. If you know what the five-year plan is, is it going to change much?
No, not to my knowledge.
I would, I would get it done, get it sent to the state because they are going to... She was, she called as a courtesy and...
Why don't you talk to the director and see if he has somebody currently that, that could step up and take that position? And then when we hire the replacement, then we can ask him if he wants to continue to have that person on the board.
Can I table this till next week?
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you, Sam, for finding everybody that you found. You did a good job.
I volunteered. I'm just kidding.
Good job doing that.
Okay, next up is withdrawal of juvenile detention agreement.
So I believe we asked Bob to draft a letter, which he did. And we can go ahead and give them notice, but we do need to take note of something in the Johnson County agreement. And it needs to be rectified before we do anything. It's in, under consideration. Jennifer actually found this, looking through the agreement. Johnson County agrees to accept in Hallsburg County juveniles at the daily reimbursement rate of not less than $150 per day. So that's not really good news. So we would really not, we, I would prefer to see it say not more than, rather than not less than.
Well, I am not looking to sign an agreement.
I understand that. But, but as we're terminating one, we need to make sure we got somewhere to go.
Right now, we're still two years committed to, to the one. And things could change with Johnson County in two years. I would, I would caution that we, that we wait.
Well, that's right. We have Bob's letter that's drafted and so we can just sit on that. And if they don't get things worked out at Gerard to give us a better rate and Johnson County corrects their contract, we can go ahead and mail that letter. So we're just, if we could put it in future business for, sometime before July 1st of next year. Oh, Bill, please.
Why is Gerard charging us now?
Well, it's steep, $130 some odd thousand, I believe.
It's $134.
The 2025 budget was, or their rate was 134...
And I got clarification as to why that really kind of went up. Lynn County bailed. And so since we're a collective, went up for everybody else. So if we bail, everybody else is getting a higher rate, too.
I knew that, that's the way you put it. I knew that Lynn County bailed.
Yeah.
The sheriff at that time was one that actually introduced it to me.
Gotcha, okay.
The formulas that the state was using to come up with the dollar amount was not feasible.
No.
There's just no way. So that's what started this conversation. But, so now, now the county, the taxpayers have to pay $134,000 until 26?
Yeah, because we didn't get that contract terminated by, 27.
27.
Because we didn't get that contract terminated by July 1st.
Which would have pushed it on to the, to the next year, yeah.
Well, I would have loved to reviewed that contract sooner.
And here's, you know, it's a done deal, but, you know, something to think about. Your county counselor, I would have filed a complaint and said, "Due to county financial hardships, we cannot meet this." That letter should have been filed, it should have been sent. And basically, as a leverage, to say whatever. If they came back with something else, to me, I would have said, "Take me to court and say, 'Okay, due to the financial hardship of Bergen County, we cannot afford $134,000.'" I mean, all three of you have set up, the previous commissioners have said, "We are hurting right now." And now we're saying $134,000?
Yeah.
There's contracts that are broken every day through courts, both at the local, state, national level. Why not challenge it?
Well, I'm not saying that we're not going to. But I mean, right now, what we had asked the county counselor to do was to contact and, and see where we could, you know, where we were within the current contract. And then we're, you know, my, my next step was to, to reach out to the Department of Corrections and...
I know, I know it's mentioned, there's statute and there's contracts.
But yeah.
Don't get the two mixed together.
Right, right.
That's, that's address the contract part of it.
Bill, would you be able to reach out to Johnson County to correct their contract? And rather than no less than $150, no more than $180 or whatever it is you guys brought to the table? We don't want to pay them more per day than what we think we're going to pay them. Would you be able to address that with them? Or you want us, somebody else to reach out to them? Seems like you've been talking to them, so...
No, I'll be more than happy to talk.
Thank you. If they would just address that line item and Article 3 under consideration.
Commissioner Bearbauer, there is a statute that says that if you are in financial hardship, that you can cancel contracts. So I'll try and find that statute for you.
Okay, yeah.
Are you done with your line of questions?
And then forward that to all of us and Bob.
Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome. What are we currently paying? What are we currently getting from our CDs?
Um, around, it's anywhere from four, it's around 4%.
And it's all local?
Uh-huh.
This is something I've been...
We could invest more.
It's not the more part? Well, yeah, the more would be nice, but you can't do more when you don't have more.
Well, we do. Because we set on tax dollars for a while. Well, we do, because we set on tax dollars for a while. And so those tax dollars for three months, once we, as we're receiving them, we could be investing those tax dollars.
Okay.
Is this having to do with where we're at on the, on the detention?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, alright.
Because here's how I see the thing about detention, it's like you guys, the fact that this contract is so old, is ridiculous, ninety-two. November one of ninety-two and nobody really brought it up till this came about, floors me. So we've been, we're paying basically what I believe is, is an insurance policy. We're paying a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to an NGO that promises to house violent, well, juveniles, to house juveniles, okay, that's great. But we don't house Jews, we don't use a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars with their services, according to my sheriff. Fine, perfect, but we're still paying, it's an insurance policy, that's what this is.
Yeah, you're right.
So my thought is, if we're gonna pay insurance policies, this is not the only one, because we're banking money, we're banking fifty on certain things, ten on certain things.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we're gonna bank, let's bank. This earmark certain dollar amounts, throw them into a CD, okay? Because I checked, I thought maybe we could do like an ETF or something like that and I was told, nope, you can't do that, it's illegal. So, right, learn something new every day, but my point is, if we're going to, if we're gonna bank money, bank money the right way, makes sense? Instead of, in the future, instead of paying something like this, take a look at cost in totality and do the risk assessment. Makes sense, that's what this is about, is risk assessment.
Yeah.
Okay?
And they've done that, they've told us how many we've housed every year pretty much and they've done that risk assessment and says, they say that Johnson County is the way to go. The only, the only, the only thing, Article Three consideration, that per day, if we can get that line item changed rather than what it says.
I mean, I know we, you know, that.
Yeah, so you guys have done that risk assessment and we can still earmark that money and it would just.
Right.
For, for whatever reason, I, you know, we, this has been.
But we missed that deadline, Sheriff.
This topic has been breached by previous commissions and why we continue down the path that we've been on, paying this kinda money. Because even before they raised it in twenty-twenty-five, it was still, you know, way more than we ever took juveniles to there.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Because I'm also looking at what somebody coined the murder, murder court? I mean, that's fifty grand, I mean, that's, that's fifty grand. I'm like, let's take that fifty thousand instead of parking in our savings, wherever that money is, put it in a CD.
And that's where we need to be speaking with our budget committee when we move forward on our, on our budget, what funds we wanna do and, hi, Mr. Smith, yeah.
So for curcination, are you gonna challenge it to make it a financial hardship that we?
Yeah, that's, that's kinda the consensus.
I'll text Bob.
We're gonna tell them that Sheriff Martin says no.
Please do, I'll sign it.
Okay.
No, we'll challenge it, we'll, we'll work with, we'll work with the lawyer. That's all I have ma'am, thank you.
Alright. Okay, so moving on to resolution for planning committee, or commission, that was. Y'all got copies of what councillor sent out?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion?
Do you actually need all them bodies?
What's that?
Do you actually need all, all those bodies?
Seven sounded like a good number to me.
I think five sounds a better number.
So you wanna go one per, you know, and then?
My, my rationale on this is. Most of the committees, the more you add to it, the more it gets convoluted. It's easier to add to the number than to take away from the number. So I say start out with five, let's see where five, you know, goes. It's a fairly good number, there's five districts, five different, well, will be, you know.
Yeah, well, we could do each one.
Some, yes, thank you.
Each one of us, okay, I mean, I don't have an issue with, you know, with reducing the number. It'd be the selection process, but we could go one, one each and then pick two.
This is just, just so you know, Mr. Chairman, this is just my suggestion, I mean, if you bring a better idea, I'm good with it too, I'm just, I'm just looking at this.
I'm asking for discussion.
Sure.
Yeah. You got points, Commissioner Milburn?
For this resolution?
Yeah.
Do, can we modify any of this?
Sure.
Well, we'll table it, we'll table it, yeah, we'll table it and have the councillor redraft it if we agree on changing the number.
Yeah, this is, this is a draft. This is a draft, we need to give changes to.
If we agree on changing the number.
Because there's also like, the terms, when the terms commence, that kinda stuff, we need to figure out who's gonna serve one year.
Well, they said in their I pick.
I'm sorry?
It says in their I pick who gets what terms off that.
Okay.
The chair does, I mean, unless you wanna, unless you wanna, you know.
No.
Okay, I mean, I'm just reading, I mean.
As long, as long as you take our inputs, that's all I say, I mean, I don't have a problem with you making decisions, sir. I'm just saying, as long as you take what we.
I know, I'll take it all into consideration, yeah.
We're good.
But I mean, I mean, unless you wanna see a different way of doing it, but I don't.
I think this is written the way it is with seven, because there's three of us right now and it's being created right now, there are not five, five commissioners here right now today. We're, we're in the old districts still and so he wants us to each pick two.
Well, we could still do it by old district, how's it say to pick the seventh one?
The seventh member should be, yeah.
Yeah, so we could do one each and then two that way and still be within the five that, you know, being a smaller number board or commission. And then, and then that, that kinda goes into the next year.
The less members there are, the more work there is for them and they're doing it for free.
That's a good point.
Are you gonna hire a planning director?
It's, I believe that he has, he said he's gonna be.
I saw that part in there yet and I'm kinda, I think we need to have a work session on that before we go decide that we're gonna increase another, you know, add another employee to the county.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
I think, I, I looked up and I think that some counties use their appraiser office and so maybe we might look at, at that duty.
Yeah.
See, see what his office consists of, but, yeah, I think maybe that's gotta get changed, rather than hire one or appoint one. But it says in there to appoint, right?
Can you guys work with Bob and tell him the changes you wanna see so that he can redraft?
Well, we need to agree on what changes we want before I, you know, and I'll talk with him about what changes we wanna change to. Are we okay with going to five?
I would say leave it at seven, because like I said, there'd be more work.
She had a valid point.
That was a very valid point.
So we wanna change, we wanna keep it at seven and change it to, change the, the position, right?
Yeah.
You have input?
Since it is such a touchy topic, I think the more voices you give, the better reception you'll have, so I think seven is a good.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
And you don't want too many cooks in the kitchen, but also.
No, I mean, that's, you're right, you're right.
I think, yeah. Okay, so I'll get with Bob about the, about the position and change the wording of that if you will get with the appraiser.
Okay.
And find out, you know, like, if he's capable of doing that, look at what those, that says the director's duties are.
Okay.
Well, it's not that, if you look at.
And then see if we can't go down that, that route with that.
The first paragraph B, director of such apartment shall be known as the planning director and shall be appointed by the board of county commissioner. Planning director shall have a bachelor's degree from a college or university in municipal planning, civil engineering, architecture, landscape, architecture or other related field, plus five years of planning experience in or, or in the alternative, a master's degree in city or regional planning, which shall be deemed the equivalent of two years of planning experience. Determination of the planning director's employment shall require a vote of the majority of the county commissioners. So there is very specific skill sets that this individual must meet. Just saying, I'm not saying anything about, I'm just saying that's what we're putting forth.
Right.
So you qualify?
Huh, yeah, I do. Wanna see my resume?
Nope.
We may not, I mean, I mean, that's something we have to look at, whether or not we even need to fill that position.
Correct, I think we, I think.
Because of, you know, the amount, the type of zoning that we're looking at, that's what we're, that's what's gonna dictate that position. Yeah, so.
We'll see that.
So, I think we, we table it and I'll talk with the councillor about what changes and then we'll talk about that, we'll, we'll bring it back. So why don't we, we got a lot going on next week.
Yeah, this is just your draft, but, because you asked him to draft something.
Right, let's go to August the eleventh on that. Well, he'll be here next week.
Yeah, that's what he, he planned to talk about it on the fourth, but we just brought it to the table today because. You don't wanna spring something like this on the public. And so talking about it today, it'll come back the fourth.
So we'll talk about it next week, alright. Okay, next up is courthouse repairs, Commissioner Tran, you have the floor.
Ooh, there's a long document here, so. Bear with me. So, you guys have a copy of my report, I'll just, I try not to read it verbatim, but some of it I will. I did an inspection, I believe it was the eleventh of July. Anyways, myself and David Neville, Mr. David Neville, we toured the facility, so we went from the very top of the building all the way down to the basement. And I took a look at everything, I took, I took a look at all the infrastructure, took a look at the structural, the cosmetic, the HVAC system, so this is what I found. And I tried to mirror it off of a document called Bourbon County Courthouse Ten Year Maintenance Plan Five Year Tech Upgrade Path. Now, I did not look at the tech, I did not look at the tech because I was not charged with looking at that. And then in, in that document that I was provided, it listed certain things and I looked at that, because that ultimately culminated in a dollar amount that the county needed to spend in the next ten years to make sure that this courthouse is functional. So. I won't go into history of the courthouse, other degree, it's old, some of the various infrastructures are old, but many are in remarkable shape and I believe this is in no part to Mr. David Neville. The man's done a phenomenal job using the limited resource that we have to take care of the building. Starting with the roof, the roof is approximately thirteen years old, the roofing of the courthouse and jail annex is, is a built-up roofing comprising of ninety-pound roofing. Roofing membrane sealed hot by Tumus tar. The roof roofing is in remarkable shape, I've seen those roofs last fifty years. This roof is only thirteen years old, it is suffering from blistering. And what blistering means is just like when your skin blister, the roofing membrane will blister because it's, it's lost its adherence to the decking down below. So what you do with that is you just have the roofing contractor come back, cut out the blister and set up a new patch, which the roof has shown sign of blister repair. So it's been repaired before and there's no need, in my summation, there's no need to replace the roof, we just need to repair it, which. Which right now, I found, I was provided the, so the roof was installed on eleven twenty-two, twenty thirteen, okay? And the, the warranty is for thirteen years, so that's eleven twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight. Fifteen years, I'm sorry, fifteen years. So we still have another three years on this roof and right now it's not leaking, we haven't had one reported leaking. If there was a leak, it's usually through a penetration, not through the roof. It's usually a condensate line or something like that coming out of the HVAC system. The, the parapet wall that's up there, it's been coated on the inside, you can't see it because you can't change the aesthetics of the building. So on the backside, the inside of it, they coated it with, by Tumus tar. So they mopped it and they put, they put a membrane, it looks like cheesecloth, but it's impregnated with tar. And it's basically like a gauze bandage, so you're putting a layer, then you put the bandage on top and you layer that. The problem with that is it's tar and over the years, it's gonna dry, and when it dries, it cracks. So it needs to be patched, it needs, it needs to be serviced again, okay? So good news on that one. There are some, well, there are some cracks and there are some openings in that sealant and we need to get them to come out, do the warranty work. Good news is, Mr. Neville contacted GAF. He contacted GAF and they're supposed to be out this week to do an inspection and then formulate a plan of action to do a warranty call on our, on our roof, okay? The exterior walls, numerous spalls, that's where the, the, the block is, the water, the freestyle actions just cause it to pop out like this. The, your tuck points, they're, they need to be redone, the whole facade needs to be redone. There was one piece that fell off the top of the building on this side, on the east side, a few years back. But overall, it looks good, it just really needs, you really need to do that, that's, that's one thing. That's actually number two on my list, I listed the top three, okay? So it's number two priority is, is the facade, the whole building. Exterior windows are the original metal frame, single-pane glass with the decorative inlays around it. Now, the, the.
Historical.
Yeah, it is historical, but the glazing is made out of an oil product. And anytime you do something with oil over the years, it just dries out, so the glazing is dry. It is drafty, but it's not necessarily, it's not like a huge thing, we do need to do something, we need to preserve it. And what I would recommend is preserve the windows, okay? But then on the inside, set another window. And that's, that's how we, that's how we did with historical buildings out west, is we'll have the original window on the outside and then they'll custom make an interior window and attach it. So now you can't open the outside window, so you basically have a double pane. Instead of being one unit, it's two units. That's number three on my list of what we should do. The courtrooms, judiciary, Kirk's places, those look really good except for one thing. We have no cyclical maintenance plan in this building. And by that, I mean, you should have a plan in place, and this is definitely for you ma'am, is create a plan where, for instance, every three years, we paint public space. Every five years, you paint private space. So this is public, so every three years you paint this, but like somebody's office would be every five years. Carpet, you replace, you replace every seven years roughly, or becomes threadbare or worn or discolored, okay? Now, the carpet in this place was like twenty-plus years, I, I, I think David told me it was like twenty-six years old, that carpet's ridiculous, alright? And they've done a remarkable job of keeping it up and, but it's still, it's just old carpet. We have enough money to do this, it's, where, where's that parked at?
Cell six.
Thank you, so we have money to do something with it. My, my suggestion when it comes to the judicial space is remove their carpet and just put down luxury vinyl planking. Because we already have it on the second floor, so let's go ahead and put it on the third floor. David says it's much easier for him to maintain versus going there and vacuuming and, and the carpet right now is in such bad shape, it needs to be restretched. But here's the problem, there's asbestos underneath that. So you don't wanna mess with, you don't wanna pull, you don't want, you don't want the nine-by-nine tiles to be fireable, okay? Which means the minute you pulverize it, now you're breathing asbestos. So you wanna overlay it, that's where you encapsulate it, you're not messing with it.
You lay it on top of the carpet?
No, you take the carpet off, if the carpet is glued, you're in trouble. Doesn't look like it's glued, it looks like it's stretched and intact and, but I won't know until they pull it up, you, you won't know until they pull it up. But if they pull it up and there's tile stuck to the bottom of it, that's not a good thing, you're gonna have to abate that and abatement does cost. Abatement is not cheap. Okay, so you're gonna have to weigh the pros and cons of that. Maybe do exploratory, pull up a little, go into the break room, pull up a little corner, just see if it's sticking to the tile. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay.
Okay, but by no means crush those tiles. Because fireable means, I could have, I could have, if the tile's like this, that's fine. But the minute you crumple it up and make powder out of it, now you can inhale it, so don't do that, okay? And it's the glue underneath it is even worse, so there's black glue, that's, we'll talk about that. But I would definitely be careful with that. So, yeah, did I answer you on that question, on, on the courtrooms? The court, the courtrooms are really nice, I mean, for an old building, I think they're pretty good. Elevator needs to be modernized, the last maintenance which occurred in July twenty twenty-five on elevators will only prolong the inevitable and the elevators will go down again. It's repaired for now. I recommend getting three coats, three different vendors, and what I would recommend is asking them for their response time. I don't, the cost is important, but it's gotta be the response time. Because if you had two elevators, I can deal with slow response time, but you don't, you have one elevator. So I would focus on, if I call you, will you respond within twenty-four hours?
Okay.
Okay, you need to figure out a way to, we need to figure out a way to get ourselves to the top of the pecking order and we need to modernize it. Elevators number one, number one priority. The HVAC, courthouse was originally constructed in a manner which precluded the installation of a central heating cooling system. You can't put a trunk line in there, there's no space. So a lot of the, like, the old IT room, there's a, there's a package unit sitting in there that you would see in your garage, it's in there. The courtroom, third floor, it's a newer courtroom, they have one behind a wooden screen, yes, it is loud, once you turn those things on, it's kinda like when we were over at the, what's that hall across the street? Yes, it is loud, once you turn those things on, it's kinda like when we were over at the, what's that hall across the street? Memorial Hall, when those train units kick on, you gotta go turn it off because you can't hear anybody talk, so it is what it is. If you had money, I don't even know how to do that, I was gonna suggest that we put in a packaged unit. But you can't modify the exterior of the building, that's the problem with the historical building. You know, without ship bow allowing you to do that. The current HVAC system is functioning well within design standards, albeit it is unsightly and noisy, but it is functional. So, I don't know if you wanna spend money on that. The HVAC over the jail annex, this portion over here, there are four other, uh, four RTUs rooftop units. Two are fairly new, two are old, they're, the one that's old, some, uh, they said they wanna replace it to two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Sounds innocuous enough until I went down and that unit actually conditions the maximum security portion of the jail. So I looked in there, there's a couple of computers desk and a plotter. And I'm thinking, well, if you wanna spend thirty thousand dollars to condition this space, that's storage. In the end, you could spend roughly six thousand dollars to replace the heat exchanger, and that's what I would recommend. Just replace the heat exchanger and, and move on. The boilers, wow, the boilers are like, they're old, they're really old, but they're great shape. David's done a fantastic job, I looked at, there are new parts on there, parts are still available, I say just keep using it. Because when you go to a new one, the new one's gonna require a technician who comes in, it's, one, it's proprietary. Whatever you buy, it's going to be proprietary, and they'll have a proprietary technician come in and say, well, I have to plug in my computer. Right now, Mr. Neville can do everything, he'll call somebody, they can do it, they can take care of, we don't need, you know, there, there's, there's pros and cons with technology. Make sense? So, uh, he's, like I said, it's working good, I would leave it alone, there was a line item, uh, line item for eighty-seven hundred thirty-four dollars for a new mower. I didn't see a need for a new mower, I, the mower is being maintained, it's working well, there's nothing wrong with it, I say keep using it until it, it can't. It's not functioning anymore, then go buy another, but I didn't agree with that one. Uh, floors are marble, polishing and seal, uh, there's a forty thousand dollar cost projected for this item. I don't know where that came from, I will tell you this, the floor needs to be stripped, or it needs to be cleaned, stripped and polished. That happens twice a year, it gets burnished every week, and burnishing is just, we could. I would just get a contract, that's the best thing, get a contractor to come in here, clean it, strip it, polish it, and then just have him come in once a week and burnish it. And you got four of them, pop, okay? The Bourbon County Courthouse is historic and should be preserved, how we do that will most likely be up to future generations and future le- leaders. Any modifications, upgrades or projects that occur should be approached with caution. There is asbestos within the building envelope, most assuredly under the carpet and uh, in the new tiles installed. Um, not new, new, but the tiles that they installed there. Um, if anyone else sees, if anyone sees loose insulation, beware, it's most likely asbestos. When in doubt, please have the items tested before proceeding, and if found, have the area properly abated. Our ventures say we may even have some lead soldered pipe or asbestos wrapped wiring in the building somewhere. So asbestos is everywhere, this, in the old days, it was the magic mineral, okay? So just be aware of that, I was up in the space between the courtroom and the rooftop, and I did see something in there, I didn't go in there and sniff, I didn't do that. But it, it looked suspect to me, so if you're gonna be in there, just make sure you test it, alright? So, in the future, the county will need to decide if the courthouse can and should be renovated. When done correctly, historical buildings take on a persona that new construction cannot compete with. These majestic facilities speak to all of us, young and old, they allow us to relive our youth while showing and teaching younger generations about our history and culture. While I believe we should renovate this facility, I believe we should look at the mission of all the various functions of the courthouse under her roof. Most counties have justice centers, and while these centers are not as majestic as this courthouse, they are most assuredly more functional and efficient. As commissioners, elected officials and Bourbon, Bourbon County citizens, we have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers' money. Collectively, we need to decide how best to move forward, whether it means a renovated majestic courthouse where a justice center remains to be seen. That's basically, in a nutshell, that is a million dollar question, because in the next ten years, you will spend close to a million dollars. In one fashion or not, hopefully there's not an ah shoot moment, make sense? But, this is something that you guys, the citizens, should not allow us to kick down, uh, kick that can down the road. You should bring it up to us as often as you, you feel the need to, this is a, a very nice building, you know, I, I see it. But man, this is gonna, this is gonna cost you some money to fix up, and in the end, what we ended up doing with the, the fed buildings is. We renovate them, and then we turn them into offices, they're not necessarily courthouses anymore, make sense? We turn them into office buildings and then we build a new courthouse. But a new federal courthouse would cost you, this is not federal, but a new, my new federal courthouse was like a hundred sixty-two million dollars. And it took twenty years to build, so. Yeah, we talked to judges, but I would definitely, please, well, councilor, just do something for them, and just the, the people in the building, I would, you know. You, you, you catch more flies with honey, make sense? So just give them, don't, don't, new carpet, no, new floor and whatever, any questions for me?
That was a very nice report, thank you for doing that.
Okay, we do have, yeah, you.
What, where's the carpet?
Third floor, I think.
No, third floor clerk's area, if you go behind those locked doors, there's carpet everywhere. I didn't see any, I saw floors. Well, yeah, this is, this is luxury vinyl plank.
Moving on.
Thank you for doing that report, Sam.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
It's actually very helpful.
Uh, next up, new business, one oh eight West Second Street Building, Commissioner Milburn, you have the floor.
Do the reorganization of the agenda, did you?
Did we add that on there? I'm sorry, um, yes.
I think you had the ideas, I just put it on there for you.
So we have three, well, actually, it's two resolutions, because one is code of conduct. Rules of decorum for public forums, and that's the main one. And then county resolution meeting rules of order, and that's the one that has this agenda on it that we would have to amend, yeah. And I'm not, I don't have the numbers on my copies, so, I don't know, I don't remember, it was very first several. Uh, resolutions that we passed, so it's either gonna be one, two or three.
Oh, yeah, the resolution.
That was the rules one, what, do you have the number on the, on the agenda? Oh man, it was that far back.
Yeah, it was right at the beginning of the year, oh, might, you know, something like that.
Yeah, ten dash two five, that's the one we would wanna amend. And all we're asking, our, um, Commissioner Tran had pointed out is that we move public comments from item four to item.
No, we, we have it from.
Well, I know it should be item four.
Item eight, we have it at item eight, we should move to item.
Yeah, we have it at item seven.
So you wanna write.
But on the original, it is item four. On my copy anyway, what about your copy? Yeah, it's item four. And we shifted them up there just kinda.
Because we always add people to them that don't wanna stay here till ten P M.
County business, so I don't, I don't see a reason to change if it's already in there, is yours that way too?
Well, so public comment is above consent agenda on this thing.
Was it? I thought consent agenda was number three.
It seems to me that even after this, we had comments about putting it in between old and new business, for whatever, I don't remember.
I don't remember either, I just remember it's, it seems to be better if we're gonna, especially since we're doing both agenda items and non-agenda. Because if you do, if you have agenda items ahead of it, then you don't give people a chance to speak prior to.
I was thinking the agenda items within the thing said, and I'd have to look, I'd have to read it. But I was thinking it said that if there was a topic that was on the agenda at that time, the chairman would call on them.
Well, and that's the way I thought it was, and then when you read the decorum meeting resolution, it is, both of them are in the, the public comment section. Cause you fill out the note card and it, it covered both, both agenda and non-agenda.
Speaking on agenda items, we called upon an order of which they signed in. So, I, I think you could.
But I believe in one meeting, you had, you had let the public know that you wanted them to, to go ahead and talk about it with you when you were talking about it.
Well, that would be, you know, what, what are you guys, I mean, because. Part of it, part of it is, is if you put it all in one section, then, then you're moving the meeting forward, but what happens is, what has happened. Uh, is that when you put it at the end of the agenda item, then we have our discussion and then we open it up to the public, you end up with. Uh, quite a few, and then sometimes you end up with a back and forth, and there's gonna be a lot of point of order. But if you allow the public to, to make comments beforehand, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, then we kinda know. If they, if they're wanting, i- i- if they have a point about a top, topic that we're going to discuss, like tonight, where we discussed. Uh, the five year solid waste plan, they'll talk about it up there at the beginning of the meeting. And then we'll have that into consideration when we have our discussion further down the agenda. That's, that's how, how I see, cause it kinda moves the meeting along a little quicker. Your points, I mean.
I think no matter how you parse this, you're, you're gonna have a sticky wicket in there somewhere. Because either you let the people speak, so they don't have to wait, and then move on with the business, and then they don't get to speak later on, I'm.
We kinda addressed it in the parliamentarian, where each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak once before anyone speaks again. So letting everybody take turns speaking, uh, on our items, and then public comment will be heard from individuals who have signed up. Uh, they'll follow the same decorum rules, and then after the public comment, we'll all speak on it again, and then we can vote. Um, that gives them a chance to be part of the discussion. It just, it's up to you how much you want to allow people to be part of the discussion, I'm fine with that.
It's up to us.
I mean, I'm fine with them doing it, and, but if you're not, and you're at the beginning, then I support that, so that's fine.
Okay, so then. Public comments on items not on the agenda, do you wanna keep it where it's at, on number seven? Or do you want to, cause I'm, I'm okay with. Get out of here, okay, so let's move items not on the agenda there and then keep the others at the end of each item.
That sounds good, and that follows your resolution then.
Yeah, and then make sure they.
Need to, see, I've been putting executive sessions to the top because a lot of times it's including people from not outside of here, so maybe you. Maybe you change the resolution that it can, the chairman can suggest, you know. When there's outside people coming in or certain things, because like even the K work safety item, I would not have wanted them to have to sit here until new business.
Well, and I think, I think that's, you know, when you're setting the, the agenda, I mean, like there, you did that, I think that just. You, you just know to put up above, yeah. Anytime we have visitors that, speaking, whether it's elected officials or that, we should show them the courtesy of putting them at the beginning of the meeting.
So the only thing that we're changing then is moving public comment up.
You could repeal the resolution and just say, hey, I'd like this to be here.
What's wrong, it, it sounds good, but what's wrong with like what we just did tonight, because the, the, the thing is.
Reorganizing it when we get here.
Yeah, because it's situational, it's like, because there is no.
Nothing wrong with it.
Fast and hard way of, it's, if, we have somebody coming who's a guest, they're gonna be part of executive session, we just move it up, make sense? Otherwise, we just keep it down below where, you know.
Most of the time you tell me when you have a guest, and I'll move it up to the top, if it's just for others. If I, if I know it's just gonna be the three commissioners and maybe the county councillor, let me know that and I'll move it to the bottom. And then that can be at the end of the meeting, so people aren't having to sit here thirty minutes through a discussion if they don't want to.
So I, I think it should be, you know, fluid like that, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue.
I'd say change that one item, you know, and then leave everything else so that we can go ahead and change.
We amend the agenda, we have that, that right.
We'll move the public comments up. In front of old business.
Right, sounds good. Alright, so now, new business, one oh eight West Second Street Building, Commissioner Milburn.
And so, we have a building that we own right behind the courthouse, the county owns. It's underutilized, and we don't get much rent on it. I believe the clerk pulled some contracts for me, I got a cooperation agreement from Angie Eads. I think they pay us a thousand dollars a month, and they'd like to not pay us that because, you know, we do have a cooperation agreement. And they are doing things for us, um, so they're open to moving out of that building. I wanted to call and get average gas and electric, but they had me on hold so long every time, and that, didn't get that done, so I'm gonna keep trying to get that. But my thoughts are, we probably. Yeah, we probably pay, you know, a little chunk. Okay, for average gas and electric, can you get that for me? So they, um, we get five hundred from driver's license and a thousand from six judicial, so it's fifteen hundred, and we provide the utilities. And so, we also have a lot of unutilized space in that building, constant maintenance.
The roof leaks.
Yeah, and needed maintenance, uh, so, uh, my opinion would be to find a place for these. Two offices over here, and um, let go of that building and the lot behind it. And I've spoke to all of them, so, so they don't, so, they kinda know that that is.
You have an idea, you have a suggestion or an idea?
Yeah, we do have, uh, I think David said suite ten, which would have been the old IT office, we have that available. And that would be big enough, I believe, for the driver's license, we also have the, uh, old public health building, which don't look that old, it looks pretty good. Right behind, it has two bathrooms in it, and uh, that could be suitable, I wanna show them, I wanna show the other.
There's only two people.
Is that probation, that other?
Six judicial, that's Angie that was in here with Bill.
Well, it's worth looking at.
But I just wanted.
I mean, I, I don't see us carrying on an additional expense if we don't need it.
I don't want to do that either. And it just costs money to have empty space. That's all, I'll, I'll get the averages through Susan or through the.
Or talk about, you know, talk to those groups about, you know, take them over and knock, get them to look at that trailer and.
How many square feet do they need, that's, that's my suggestion, is anytime we're trying to bring tenants into a space.
I believe Angie has about five hundred square feet if that, she said she has five offices and they're tiny, and they have to share a driver, the. They have to share a bathroom with driver's license, uh, I haven't seen their space, I just, that's what she described to me. And then the driver's license says that they really don't have enough space either, although the building's really big, so we must have them just kinda confined.
We do, I think, I mean, when I got my driver's license renewed, you're talking about, um, not very big of a space.
So, I mean, we have the space here, in my opinion, we're already paying utilities here, it wouldn't cost us a penny more to put them over here. It's costing us money to keep them over there though.
It also becomes better for the public too, because now you'll have, you would have driver's license tags and other services, all in one building, so.
Angie wouldn't mind being at the sheriff's office if Sheriff had a place for her. He don't have room for her.
We can move that trailer down there.
What'd he say?
He said, go into the next item.
A next item.
So I take that as a no.
Okay, I get it.
I think a series of trailers down there would be great.
Those porta mottos, right?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. People are making those into homes, so.
Before, before we move on to that subject, me, um, might wanna take a look at, I know you're talking about just getting rid of the, the building, but the building comes with parking lot behind it, right?
Yeah, she said, she said the parking lot.
Do a little bit, I would, do a little bit more investigation, maybe you can raise the building and do something else with, with the property. Cause the thing is, they don't make dirt anymore. You know what I'm saying? The issue you have here is not the property, the issue you have here is the building, the maintenance, I have to keep with the building. But if the building's gone, we still have the property. It opens up potential for something else in the future, that's all, you know, I'm saying look at everything in total.
Understood.
I was thinking sell, sell, building in the lot, somebody else.
Yeah, I understand that, but then if we need something in the future.
Well, we can look at and talk, you're, with the planning commission now, you could, uh, see about grants.
Do we have a parking problem here? No.
Depends.
Cause I know USDA provides grants for, for different city halls or, um, commission rooms and stuff like that. Might be worth something to look at.
You really wanna make the city happy? You wanna make the city happy? I'm joking here, right?
Yeah.
I'm joking, turn down to a dog time.
No, you, you, the neighbors would be mad.
I know, I'm messing, I'm messing.
We're gonna, we're gonna move it closer to the four H building, have all them dogs barking down in that area. We've got fair grounds, all that, isn't that close to where you live?
Next topic.
Next topic.
Sheriff tonight.
Okay, we got letter of support for Casey Brown.
I believe this, this person or this organization came to the table. I was either really new or I wasn't here yet and I was watching from the audience. They were, they, I believe we have given them some monetary support in the past, and they were asking for it again. I have spoke to him and told them that that's more than likely not gonna happen, our budget's pretty tight. And they said that more important than the, than our contribution to them would be us wanting their support, in the community, you know? And so this is a letter that they drafted, and like I said, I believe we've all gotten these in an email before. Do you guys remember?
This was on the transportation, yes, I remember it.
You remember?
Yeah. I don't have a problem doing a letter of support, do you wanna?
They call you guys?
No. I think this is gonna come, I, I personally think this is gonna be something that's gonna come back, that we're gonna have to revisit. I don't have an issue giving them a letter of support, but this makes the fourth, fourth entity in this county that gives rides.
There are a lot of them, yes.
Right.
C H C, this one, uh.
I only knew of two, I only knew of two, this one and one other, but.
There's, uh, from all the time I used to sit out there.
Yeah.
I think this, this is a fourth one. In fact, one of them was like, well, we do most of our transportation to people in the city. Cause I remember Commissioner Wise, I'm saying, he asked that specifically, I mean, what's your ratio?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well.
Do you guys wanna?
Table it, look into it some more?
Yep, sure.
Can we get a list of all four of them?
All the people that we.
Yeah, and what we budget for all four of them?
I don't know that all of them are on our budget, it's just a lot of different entities doing the same thing in our community. But if they're all given rides the whole time that year, I guess, one would just have to do more if there were less, right? So what are we tabling it for?
I don't know.
Is he the one that was talking about giving rides to veterans?
Eight eleven.
The Casey Brown, yeah, oh, V A, okay.
No, D A V, disabled American veterans.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's another one that I wasn't even aware of, I didn't realize D A V did that.
What are you tabling this one to, David?
You wanna do it to the eleven?
Yep.
Okay. Next up, department updates, Mrs. Walker.
Um, I don't have any.
You don't have any? Okay. That was a quick and easy. Uh, Commissioner Comments, it is your turn, Mr. Tran.
I can go if you don't want to go first.
By all means, please.
So at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I'd like to reiterate, please, before you get carried away with the what if or the by or pertaining to changes or lack of changes, call and ask me, you can reach me at six two zero two one five five eight eight oh. I'd be happy to let you know from my observation what Bourbon County stands to gain by the changes I introduce. I have just one request, have an open mind, and don't come to me with your mind made up with a stubborn hateful demeanor. I will probably, won't receive that any better than you deliver it, so, citizens of Bourbon County, thank you.
Commissioner Tran?
Well.
I know, I'm just looking.
I will say it's been a very busy wor, uh, week, um, there's been a lot going on, my plate is getting full. But it has been a rewarding week, it really has. I mean, I keep saying this, and I mean it, there are some really, really good people in this county, I enjoy working with them. And I know that there's changes, I know that, um, some people are not seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, but I'm seeing it, I'm hopeful, we still have a lot to do, the budget is, the budget's my biggest concern right now. So, but thank you to everybody who supports us, um, your phone calls, good and bad, I've had, you know, angry, and that's fine, that's, that's all good. But I've also had good phone calls too, so, thanks, thanks for talking, appreciate it.
And I have no comments. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Yes.
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 All right, you have things for me to sign? How come I knew that?
Oh, um, since I'm here.
I talked to Jill.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, well, well, I told her right now, I don't have anything.
Yeah, I finally remembered it.
But it sure, you know. Yeah.
Mrs. Walker? Mrs. Walker?
I could bring him cookies, all right.
I meant to say there's an open meeting, so I think you're gonna have to send it to the commissioners. I'm gonna be out of pocket from the thirteenth to the twenty-first of August.
I shouldn't be eating, or eating any cookies.
Oh, okay, oh, honey.
From the thirteenth to the twenty-first of August.